Good morning, everyone. Thank you for being here. The date is Tuesday, March 1st. This is a regular meeting of the Kings County Board of Supervisors. Due to issues arising from COVID-19, the board is using WebEx teleconferencing platform for today's meeting. And whether you're participating by the World Wide Web or by phone, we thank you for being here. And if you'd like to make a comment through the teleconferencing format, just use the WebEx system. For those interested in commenting during unscheduled appearances, there will be a raise your hand feature and we'll recognize you at that time. Members of the audience who filled out speakers cards will be taken in order. They were received by the clerk. Online speakers will be taken in order. They appear on the WebEx program. And so thank you again if you would like to address the board today under unscheduled. Each vote will be a verbal or voice vote so that members of the public can hear how each board member voted and after the motion and the second. So with that, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll to establish a quorum?
Joe Nevs.
Here.
Richard Valley.
Here.
Doug Verboon.
Here.
Craig Peterson.
Here.
Richard Fagundes.
Here. Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have established quorum. We will be able to conduct business. If I can ask everyone to please rise and remove your caps as we invite Arthur Fox of the New Hope Orthodox Presbyterian Church to deliver the invocation this morning, and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Good morning.
Good morning. I read to you from Psalm 25, verses 11 through 15. "For your name's sake, O Lord, pardon my guilt for it is great." Who is the man who fears the Lord? Him will he instruct in the way that he should choose. His soul shall abide in well-being, and his offspring shall inherit the land. The friendship of the Lord is for those who fear him, and he makes known to them his covenant. My eyes are ever toward the Lord, for he will pluck my feet out of the net. Let us pray. Almighty God, we come to you this morning and ask that you would please forgive our sins, for you see that we have no power to help ourselves to keep ourselves safe outwardly in our bodies or inwardly in our souls, no power to defend ourselves from all the adversities that may happen to both body and soul, and from the evil thoughts that may assault and hurt our souls. But we come to you through Jesus Christ, our only hope, who lives and reigns with you, Father, and together with the Holy Spirit, we know that you can be our help in our time of trouble. Lord, in your good providence, you have placed us in a time now of war and unrest, and even in our own community, we find ourselves at war with ourselves and in conflict over those who are in need of help, and we do not know what to do. Oh, look with mercy upon this city of Hanford and this county of Kings, and look upon this board of supervisors and the body that is gathered here today. Look upon her soul, Lord, and upon this council, and grant wisdom and strength both to this council and to the people that they lead and govern. In your sovereign mercy, govern the passions that almost understandably be raised in discussions to take place, and give wisdom to those you've placed in authority, and restrain the passions that would simply do no good, and grant that our hearts and minds might be committed to Jesus Christ, the only Lord and King of kings and King of all, and grant wisdom to know how we must conduct ourselves in this time. And please, Lord, in your sovereign mercy, grant an end to the fighting in the Ukraine. Bring peace and protect your people, and grant help to our president and our other elected leaders to bring unity and peace and economic stability back to our nation. And we ask these things not because we deserve to have you give them to us, but because you are merciful. And we ask all of this in the name of Jesus Christ, your son. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Fox. And now, if you'll join me, as we honor America by reciting the Pledge of Allegiance, ready, begin.
(Inaudible)
Thank you very much, everyone. Next item on this morning's agenda is to recognize Women's History Month. And Ms. Martinez, you want to kick off the recognition?
Actually, I'm taking.
Or Ed? Okay. Mr. Ed Hill?
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Ed Hill, County Administrative Officer. Today, we are asking your board to adopt a resolution declaring March 2022 as Women's History Month in Kings County. The annual observance of National Women's History Week was declared in a presidential proclamation by President Carter in 1980 and was declared National Women's History Month by Congress in 1987. Women's history takes a new look at all that has gone before and tells the story of shared past from a different perspective, not rewriting history, but presenting and expanding a version of history that recognizes the honors and accomplishments of women. This year, we recognize women who are currently affecting the future through their commitment to public service and government leadership. This year, staff requested each county department to nominate someone from their department to receive recognition. In addition, each of our board members selected a recipient of the recognition, excuse me, for the recognition. Before we begin to recognize our honorees, I need to call out a modification necessary to the proposed resolution. The current resolution is missing Nicole Fisher, Nursing Division Manager for Public Health, and we would like to have that amended. I'm going to ask each nominee to stand and be recognized, as well as join us in the well of the board chambers. When announced, please make your way down to the well, right over there on the right-hand side, or excuse me, on the north side of the room, where Diane will present you with your plaque and flowers honoring you today. I'd like to also ask the audience to please hold their applause until the end of the Chris Peterson, Attorney at Law. Chris has been licensed to practice law since 1996 when she was admitted to the California State Bar, and all types of client representation, Chris employs a positive and solution-oriented approach. She excels in her skills as a communicator who is able to bring people to common ground, and her style often yields results quickly. De'Ann Ewig, Coach at Lemoore High School. Am I saying that correctly? Thank you. Coach Ewig is skilled in athletic, excuse me, is skilled in athletic development. Coaching the game and game management focuses on softball. Coach Ewig shares a passion for academics, athletics, and life with her players. Many players have achieved their academic goals through athletics learned on Coach Ewig's team. Rosa Maldonado, Office Manager at Kettleman City Community Service District. During the pandemic, Rosa stepped up to ensure the community had the resources they needed to try and stay healthy, food deliveries, and personal protective equipment. She also led the way through the impacts of their budget due to people not being able to pay their utilities. She is a recognized leader in her community, and people depend on her for her wealth of knowledge and resources outside her job duties. Kiri Martinez, Assistant County Administrative Officer. The daughter of agriculture-working parents, she comes from modest beginnings, working her way up to the career ladder to a recent appointment as Assistant County Administrative Officer. In 2015, she was awarded the Young Professional of the Year Award by the Tulare Kings Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. At Kings County, Kiri works diligently and passionately to ensure the county is in the best shape financially while still providing effective public service to the employees and the residents. Bobby Wharton, Executive Director of Services, Kings Commission on Aging. Bobby started with the Commission on Aging in 2004 as a nutrition program coordinator working her way up to the executive director position. Bobby serves the KT AAA Advisory Board, AAA Council of California, Kings United Way, Meals on Wheels of California, and the Ombudsman Coordinator for Kings in Tulare County, Senior Assembly Member for the California Senior Legislature for Kings in Tulare County, and KCAG Social Service Transportation Advisory Council, showing her true commitment and success in the community. Kimbley Egert, Assistant Director, Child Support Services. A 30-year Kings County resident and the Assistant Director at Kings County Child Support Services, she leads by example with integrity, excuse me, integrity and trustworthy action that fuels the organization to best serve residents of Kings County. Maricela De La Rosa, Secretary to County Council. Maricela De La Rosa is the Secretary to the County Council in the Kings County County Council Office. She began her work-life as a farm laborer. Over the years, and step by step, she has progressed to the position of Secretary to the County Council. She is a woman who, through hard work and determination, rose above her circumstances. In that regard, she is a real-world example showing us all that we can achieve our dreams. Nicole Fisher, Nursing Division Manager, Kings County Department of Public Health. Nicole was pivotal during the emergence of the COVID-19 pandemic. Nicole oversees almost 50% of the public health department's programs, including infection prevention, communicable disease, children's mental services, or excuse me, medical services, and maternal-child adolescent health, health education, and the Women's Infant and Children's Program. Hanny Ring, Human Resources Department. Appointed the Human Resources Director by the board in 2020, her role is an extremely demanding one. The Human Resources Department directs the county's employer, employee relations activities, and maintains a classification and pay recruitment and selection, employee benefits, payroll processing, training, and equal employment opportunity programs. The department is also responsible for advising managers and staff on county personnel rules and MOU interpretations, disciplinary matters, and various labor laws. Marie Waite, Director of Child Support Services. Marie is an energetic leader with a focus on positively enriching the child support program. She has worked in the Child Support Services program for over 15 years. Marie has secured a reputation as a knowledgeable and experienced professional with over two decades of experience in the nonprofit, private, and public sector. Marie is a board of director for Western Intergovernmental Child Support Engagement Council. She flourishes seeing individuals succeed and propel in their careers, her desires to contribute to making a difference in people's lives. Rosemary Rand, Director of Public Health. Rosemary Rand is the county's new Director of Public Health. Prior to being named Director, Rosemary was the Division Manager of Public Health Services for the Fresno County Department of Public Health. She was the maternal-child and adolescent health and public health nursing director responsible to the Public Health Nursing Division's various programs, which include MCAH, Child Health and Disability Prevention Program, and several nursing home visitation programs. Her role included project management and budget oversight for multiple contracts and funded programs. Diane Freeman, County Council. Diane grew up in Southern California, moved to Kings County in 2011 to accept the job with the county, and has been committed to public service ever since. She holds a top legal position in the county. She has a passion for learning and public services. She is dedicated to Kings County. Her passion outside of work includes art, the outdoors, spending time with her husband, fishing, and recently started kayaking. Carolyn Leese, Principal Personal Analyst, Human Resources. Carolyn recently celebrated her 19th anniversary with Kings County on February 3rd. Over the years, she has become an asset for human resources with her knowledge and county personnel, excuse me, of county personnel. There isn't a department in this county that she has not contributed to. Mary Costa, Senior Detentions Clerk, Sheriff's Office. Mary has been a valued employee of the Sheriff's Office since 1989 and is the longest-tenured employee. She started as a commissary accounting technician, or excuse me, commissary accounting technician, and has held several technical positions within the department and is now the Senior Detentions Technician in the Alternative Sentencing Division. Mary has truly devoted her career to public service. Cody Pennington, Deputy Veteran Services Officer, Public Guardian. Cody is a leader among her peers, whose willingness and dedication to serve are truly inspiring. Her energetic leadership of staff, conservative stewardship of resources, made a huge impact during the past year of shifting state and county policies and competing priorities. She also serves on many other boards and commissions, to name a few: Kings County Veterans Employment Committee, Behavioral Health Advisory Board, Adult System of Care Collaborative, Wellness Bridge, and the Suicide Prevention Task Force. Rosemary Torres, Library Assistant, Lemoore Branch. Rosemary was nominated for longevity with the department, her commitment to excellent customer service, and a solid foundation of the nuts and bolts of her position. She is proactive, trustworthy, dependable, and effective at managing the day-to-day operations at the Lemoore Branch Library. Her dedication to the department is to be commended. An Chung Perry, Deputy Director of Administrative Services, Behavioral Health Department. An Chung, it's my understanding that she was unable to join us in person today, but I believe she is joining us by WebEx. An Chung has been incredibly dedicated and hardworking in her oversight of behavioral health department's fiscal, contracts, MHSA, and quality assurance programs through a great deal of growth and change over the past four years. Without all the accomplishments of her division and what they have achieved, the behavioral health department would not have been able to successfully take over responsibility for the mental health plan in the past four years. Katie Arns, Deputy Director of Clinical Services, Behavioral Health Department. Katie has been the Deputy Director of Clinical Services for Kings County Behavioral Health Department for four years. She has been with Kings County for nine years. Katie is an outstanding leader in the Behavioral Health Department. She has brought an intense focus on the specific requirements of DHCS, which the department must meet not only to be in compliance with state expectations, but to build an effective mental health system in Kings County. I would also like to thank Bob Henry from Waste Management for personally donating the flowers for today's event. Kings County is happy and honored to have you in attendance today as we thank you all for your work, leadership, professionalism, and the work you do in our county. I'd like to take this opportunity to now open the applause for We'll also pause for a second for pictures.
Photo op.
Okay. With that, Mr. Chairman, I recommend your board consider adopting the resolution with the one recommended change, and that concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Good. Thank you. Are there any of the women that would like to make any statement or comment, or do you like to say any words?
Thank you, Bobby.
Very nice. I was so excited about winning the lottery today.
Good. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate you being here. And Gary's taking all the photos. Mr. Chair, is it okay to take like a three-minute recess so we could take turns at least getting a photo op with the representative from our districts? You got to vote on this, right? Want to do that first?
Yeah. So if there are no questions or comments, I'd like to...
If there are no questions or comments, I'd like to move this on and pass this resolution.
As a male in this universe, I have been fortunate enough to have three great-grandmothers, four grandmothers, a mother, a wife, and three daughters. I am here today because of the form and the function that they played in my life, and I appreciate all you do and everybody around you. So thank you for leading the women in the world and keeping the men under control. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
The item's been moved by Verboon, seconded by Fagundes, and that was with the amendment as well?
Yes.
Yeah. With that, are there any other questions or comments?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Comment, I'm happy to make a second if one hasn't been made. But I also want to thank Waste Management, Mr. Henry, and the staff for doing all the work today to get organized and put the work in the plaques and the flowers and make sure that this ceremony was very beautiful. And so congratulations to all the representatives here today, the women, the leadership. But I also just want to take a quick second for all the women that are in the audience here today, too, because you women help us to have a voice, a woman's voice here on the dais with the work that you guys do on a day-in and day-out basis. So I'd like to ask all the women in the audience here today to also please stand up for a round of applause for the efforts that you do to make the world go round in Kings County.
Very good. Thank you. Dr. Ewing, anything you want to say? You're good. The item has been moved by Verboon, seconded by Fagundes. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Aye.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Craig Peterson.
Aye.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes. But the record shows that item stands approving unanimous by members present. Now, if we can organize and get some photo ops going?
Sure.
Yep. Gary, where's that easy spot?
Um, mid-the-middle, I guess.
Okay.
That's why I thought we could break off. I'd like to go down and get my photo with Rosa at some point, but...
Yeah, you want to get a group up, Mr. Chair? Yeah, go ahead. Get that done. Can you catch everybody? Ladies, can I? Yeah, yeah.
Shorties in the front? You, too, shorty.
We can make that work.
I don't care if they get you, as long as they get me.
It didn't flash, Gary. You're bright enough. All right. Now, you want to take individuals? Get a few. Yeah, we'll get a few.
Please, hold on.
Do that.
I'm giving up.
You get with your nominee.
You get with your nominee.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Thank you for those presentations. We want to acknowledge and thank all the recipients and their families. So thank you very, very much. We'll now move to unscheduled appearances. Any person may directly address the board at this time on any item on the agenda or any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of this board. Speakers will be limited to two minutes. Will the clerk please call the first speaker?
Ken Baird.
Good morning, Ken. Thank you for being here.
Good morning. Nice to see all your friendly faces this morning. My name is Ken Baird, and I live in Hanford, and I'm here to advocate for permanent supportive housing. Much of the opposition that I've seen to this comes from people who are fearful of people with mental illness. So I want to tell you about my son. As some of you know, my son has struggled with mental illness. Thirteen years ago, after a manic episode, he was diagnosed with bipolar disorder. As sometimes happens, people who have experienced symptoms of mental illness have landed in jail, as he did. He was ultimately sent to the state hospital in Atascadero, and after eight months of proper medication and therapy, he was allowed to live with us while he continued his recovery. In April of 2012, he was granted restoration of sanity, leaving him free to pursue his new life. After several years of trying to work part-time and pursue a college degree, it became clear that he needed to attend college full-time. We didn't have the resources to support him independently, but he could live with us while he pursued his studies. In essence, we were his permanent supportive housing. Sadly, not everyone who struggles has a family they can fall back on. Recently, our son graduated from Fresno State University. Today, he is a partner and vice president of an engineering firm in Fresno that specializes in innovative agricultural technologies. Like many startups, money is tight. Our son's number-one struggle has been to find affordable housing that would allow him and his family to live independently. For those who oppose this housing, I wonder, looking at the sign here that says "In God We Trust," if you thought about what the Bible says about the responsibilities to the less fortunate. Thinking about this led me to Matthew 25. On the Day of Judgment, it says that Jesus will call all of us together and divide the righteous from the unrighteous, as the shepherd divides the sheep from the goats. To the sheep, Jesus said, "The kingdom of God is open to you, because when I was thirsty, hungry, naked, and a stranger, you gave me water, food, clothing, and shelter." None of the sheep... leaving him free to pursue his new life. After several years of trying to work part-time and pursue a college degree, it became clear that he needed to attend college full-time. We didn't have the resources to support him independently, but he could live with us while he pursued his studies. In essence, we were his permanent supportive housing. Sadly, not everyone who struggles has a family they can fall back on. Recently, our son graduated from Fresno State University. Today, he is a partner and vice president of an engineering firm in Fresno that specializes in innovative agricultural technologies. Like many, like many startups, money is tight. Our son's number-one struggle has been to find affordable housing that would allow him and his family to live independently. For those who oppose this housing, I wonder, looking at the sign here that says "In God We Trust", if you thought about what the Bible says about our responsibilities to the less fortunate. Thinking about this led me to Matthew 25. On the day of judgment, it says that Jesus will call all of us together and divide the righteous from the unrighteous as the shepherd divides the sheep from the goats. To the sheep, Jesus said, "The kingdom of God is open to you, because when I was thirsty, hungry, naked, and a stranger, you gave me water, food, clothing, and shelter." None of these, none of the sheep understood that. They didn't know why he said that. And he replied to them, "What you did to the least of our brothers, you did to me." Clearly, there is a need for permanent supportive housing in our community. The question is, will we be guided by our fears or our responsibilities? Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Also, as a reminder, the clerk is holding up the colored photos. So yellow means thirty seconds, red means stop. And I'll let you roll through a stop sign every once in a while, so.
The next speaker is Rose Shapley.
Good morning. I'm Rose Shapley. It's, it's a pleasure to be here in person with all of you. I hope everybody here is vaccinated. I, I sent that email with the chart to you all. I hope that you had plenty of time to go through that. In summary, even if you're vaccinated, you can still get it. And, and even if you're vaccinated, you can still die from it. And I experienced that. I tested positive after being vaccinated, not just once, but I had my booster. I couldn't believe it. And, and felt like I was going to die. It was like pneumonia, because I have COPD. So I hope everybody's vaccinated. And, and I hope that everybody who isn't vaccinated will get vaccinated of the over... I can't even say it now. We've had over sixteen thousand, is that correct? Vaccinations here in Kings County? Is that right? Nobody's looking at my paper? Never mind. Somebody knows. We've had a lot of people vaccinated. We had four hundred people die. A lot of those died after vaccines were available. So what does that tell us? Vaccinations are health, they're hope. I really just, I want to, I want to see more of that out there. I also wanted to show you, I did a little cut and paste on the Architect Davinson's thing. And I, I've been sharing that with people. Anybody who's interested can contact me about that. I was a little bit concerned that there was no public input when it was a three-story building and public access was being interfered with. I saw a really simple solution of putting the parking lot so it would obscure the views from the second floor of the strip mall. Also, I wanted to see a ramp so that those in the complex, the smaller complex, will have greater access. And their special needs might be more tended to. Also, not to put them next to the blinky lights of the Remington. So I hope somebody will contact me about that. Really want to thank you for your time. Everybody take care. I love this community, so, thank you.
Stay healthy. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Christine Leach.
Good morning. Thank you for being here.
Don't worry. All right. So hello, Board of Supervisors and everyone in attendance here. I am Christine Leach, a Hanford resident since age three and a homeowner, as you know, for over twenty years at the eleven in Fargo area, where this housing development is proposed. Again, there is limited availability of services, especially services for the probable clientele in this development, as well as traffic and parking issues which exist without this large development. I did not mention to you, the Board of Supervisors last week, but I did tell the city council that I am an RN. I have been a nurse for almost twenty-seven years. With all this experience, I have so many nursing stories to share, both good and bad. I am going to share one with you now. About twenty years ago, I worked for Kingsview Mental Health for about two years. I met many seriously mentally ill individuals, and I did not realize just how many there are in my community I live in and work in until this job, at which it is incredibly sad, it truly is. Part of my job was giving Haldol and Prolixen Deck injections to clients who were schizophrenic and psychotic. There was one I gave injections to who I ran into at the Hanford Bowling Alley with my young children and several of their friends. He ended up coming over uninvited to where we were bowling and proceeded to lecture all the girls on respecting me. Next thing you know, he'd show up at the office and ask for me for no reason. He even left flowers and candy at which I would not accept. It came to a point that I was not to take care of him, and basically, the receptionist had to lie and say I wasn't there. He even showed up at my girls' cheer practices standing by my car on a few occasions. His case managers were involved explaining that it is unacceptable and inappropriate. Then I got this really extremely bizarre letter left on my home doorstep. I wanted to find it for the meeting because I just moved into my home less than two years ago, and I came across it in my box of paperwork, but I just didn't have time. I ended up calling his parole officer because, as somebody pointed out, a lot of them end up in prison and jailed, unfortunately. And the, the parole officers were well aware of what was going on with me, and they were trying to assist me as much as they could legally. Then finally, one day, I got a call from his parole officer saying that he had been arrested, and he's going back to prison for at least a few months, not because of what he did to me, but because he got caught past curfew. The period over a course of four to six weeks were the creepiest and scariest things that I've been through for my family and myself. These individuals are unpredictable, and they are so ill. Quite frankly, how dare you, the Board of Supervisors, not communicate with us, the community? How dare you not let us know that these individuals potentially would be living near us? I don't care about me. I care about my children and my grandchildren, as well as my neighbors and their children and grandchildren. So on the website, the Kings County Board of Supervisors, Doug Verboons bio states, "I dedicate, I dedicated, I am dedicated, sorry, to representing our county's residents, and I will continue to make every effort to protect the rights of the citizens of Kings County." I will end with this as the Constitution starts. "We, the people, are asking you to do what Verboons bio states, simply to make every effort to protect and better serve us, the people, who had no idea until escrow closed about this upcoming project. Yes, we were complacent, but now our eyes are open, to say the least. Please consider moving this project to the perfect lot that Mrs. Clark owns that she addressed to you last week, at which it's much closer to the needs of especially the behavioral health individuals which live near this development or will be within this development." Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Joe Valley. Possibly Joe Vaia. Okay, the next speaker then is Anna Uribe.
Good morning. Thank you for being here.
Good morning. Hi, my pleasure. I'm here, I'm one of the providers for the IHSS. I'm just here to support our, our providers to, to be fair and equal to all of us with same wage and the patience that we have to give, to provide for our, our recipients and the patience and the support and the love-caring of us that not everyone, it's easy to, to do. Thank you so much.
Good. Thank you for your remarks, and thank you for your service.
The next person is Marcia Valadavez. I apologize.
Because when I met my husband, I didn't know any Spanish.
Good morning. Thank you for being here.
Good morning. Thank you. My name is Martha Valladolid, and I'm the region vice president of SEIU 2015. Okay. I tend to cry when I talk, but I'm going to try not to, okay? In the early seventies, I started my career as a letter carrier in Fresno. When I walked into the post office on my first day, I was the only women letter carrier. The man said, "If she wants to get paid like a man, she's going to work like a man." And I told him, "I pick grapes. This is nothing." I retired after thirty-four years. It wasn't easy. I dealt with a lot of discrimination. But I didn't give up because I was always taught to stand up for myself and what I believed in. I loved my job, and I wasn't going to let anything discourage me from doing it. I was a proud letter carrier now, and I'm a proud letter, a part, a proud care provider. I stand before you today to defend the dignity and respect of my coworkers and the care providers and the recipients and home supports providers from Kings County. Has, hasn't gotten a raise since 2017. As the cost of living continued to rise and our wages remained the same, I, I have dealt with a lot of injustice in my lifetime. And it is just wrong that in 2022, we are practically begging you for a raise. I provide for my daughter, Crystal Valladolid, who is thirty-seven years old. Crystal has Down syndrome. I do everything for her from dusk to, to dawn, things that you and I might take for granted, but are lifesavers for Crystal, like bathing her, cooking, uh, cooking healthy foods and helping her to determine what's right and wrong, not to put the microwave to warm rice for two hours. My job is, is a normal job, and is a job important. Putting my daughter in an institution, they keep telling me, "Why don't you put her there?" Never. It's not an option. When your parents, your child, or even you need someone to help you survive, are you going to consider that person's job unimportant? When your mom and dad needs their diaper changed, or your son or daughter, who is in full bond, needs to be picked up and bathed every day, aren't their needs, their needs are not unimportant? Seniors and people with disabilities like Crystal, who qualifies for the home support programs, are less human than you and me. The work that we do is important, and the care that we provide is second to none. We love, we love providing for our recipients, but we need to be also able to survive. So I ask you, our elected officers, to please do your job so we can do ours. I won't give up fighting for what's right for care recipients like Crystal and care providers like me. Providing deliverable wages for those who care for others is right and moral thing to do. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for being here.
The next speaker is Ernie Harmon.
Morning, Ernie. Thanks for being here.
I don't want to waste too much of your time, but I've been thinking about this whole project you all got going. And I really think that spending time with these individuals that we're trying to help, that you're talking about helping with this project, I can't see it happening, but I spent twenty-three years at that shop talking to these people on a daily basis. Half of them don't want what you want to do for them, but yet, they are constituents. They don't have a house, but they're, they're constituents. Have we talked to them at all? One lady came up to you that had some mental health issues, and she spoke. I guess the answer to what I saw, the answer to our problem with these people is we wait for them to die. Dave Carter passed away. He was a good friend of mine. Why don't we start doing something that really matters, talking to the people that this is going to supposedly help? And I can't see anything that's going to cost eight hundred, nine hundred, a thousand dollars when Dave was well off, and he had five hundred and seventy-some dollars coming into him. So your efforts to do something for people that are going to transition, I don't think it's going to work. I don't know what you're going to do here, but I think the horse is out of barn, and this isn't going to stop. This was the third thing I know about, that people like you that sit on boards, told people what to do to come talk to us, and it's the third time they didn't do it. And you want to use that as an excuse? Well, we told them to go talk to you. I don't know. I really don't. But this is my last chance to say, "This is wrong. You should have come to us first." I spent time yesterday, day before, talking to little kids that are running around out there, painting up the canal, having a good time with spray cans. We don't care about anything in this town, as long as we don't see it. You need to get out of here and go see what you're talking about, who you're talking about helping. Thank you.
Thank you, Ernie.
The next speaker is Rebecca Bell.
Good morning, Rebecca. Thank you for being here.
My name's Rebecca Bell, and I'm part of Windgate in Hanford, California. Apparently, according to Diane Sharp, that the reason why the Clark property wasn't deemed to be considered for the project was because that it was low density. So again, that's the state reaching out. It's overreach, honestly. And they pretty much tied their hands to where they limited their choices. Again, it's Northgate or Home Garden. So they tried everything. They tried all kinds of properties and everything. And I just wish that people would... I'm sorry that people have come across people that have caused them to be jaded. But as my grandma said, "Just because a few bad apples, you don't throw out the full bushel." So it's, it's my personal experience of living with it and dealing with the stigma, it sucks. It honestly does. And I just wish that there was some more support out there that's a little bit more positive. And you're spending all this energy for the what-if, and you're actually worried about the neighbors coming in? The way that some of the people have gotten assertive towards it, it's more that I'm going to be worried that the security will be to defend them to, from us, from people that have the NIMBY stigma. So it's not fair. I mean, you can't just say that everybody's going to be, everybody with mental illness is going to be violent. And I'm sorry you had that come across the people like that. And I just wish that people had more positive experience with it. But I just would wish that people give it a chance and try to understand. I'm not dismissing anybody's emotions, but I'm just asking them to be a little bit more open-minded and try to see it from all angles and try to see how much government overreach has pretty much tied, tied you guys' hands to where it was already done. It was out there last two years. And, but it kind of, I, I woke up, honestly, and I'm now more involved, so. And it shouldn't have come to this, for this, but if we need to fight, it needs to be taken to the state level if we want to make changes. And we need to show the state that we can be mature enough to be open-minded. That way, they won't have to have these laws put in to protect the mental health department. So to remove, to help them remove the roadblocks. Because wherever they go, they're kicked out of town. So we just need something to help them. Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca.
The next speaker is Apollonia De La Valencia. I apologize.
Good morning. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Good morning, honorable mesa de supervisores of, of Kings. Mi nombre es Apollonia Valencia. Yo vengo a apoyar a la región, a la región tres de aquí de, de este condado.
Good morning, honorable supervisors. My name is...
Apollonia Valencia.
Apollonia Valencia, and I'm here to support Area Three of the Hanford, uh, the, the, the...
Fresno, Kings.
The Kings County area.
Estamos peleando por un mejoramiento para los trabajadores del HSSEs. Y considero que no es justo lo que están ganando el mínimo cuando trabajamos nosotros veinticuatro horas al día con nuestros enfermos y solo se nos pagan cuatro, cinco horas, seis máximas. Es necesario que tomen en cuenta que, que deben ganar un poco mejor. La vida, el costo de vida en esta situación por, por lo del coronavirus ha aumentado, y a nosotros no nos están aumentando sueldo.
Just wanted to ask and let you know that I'm fighting for a salary raise for our area because despite that we work twenty-four hours a day, we only get paid four, five days, four, five hours a day. And especially now with the, with the COVID situation, we have to work even harder. And I don't think it's fair that we're getting this... And I don't think it's fair that we're getting this salary where we work a lot more than, we deserve more.
Yo cuido a mi esposo por seis años. Le dio un stroke. Él trabajaba para la ciudad de Clovis, y no nos estaban atendiendo por seis, por más de dos años estuvimos luchando por un aumento de un dólar. Estábamos pidiendo, y nos dieron sesenta centavos. Entonces nosotros estamos ganando lo, el mínimo y sesenta centavos más. Y yo cuidaba a mi esposo veinticuatro horas al día. Y no, y no, y no, este, no era justo, no es justo para nuestros compañeros de aquí del condado de Kings, que no teneran aumento. Quisiera que tuvieran en cuenta, que tuvieran en cuenta que, que este, que miraran en ellos, que tuvieran compasión, y que les dieran, que los ayudaran, que les dieran un aumento. Yo no, yo no soy de aquí, yo vengo de Fresno, pero yo viví la situación de ellos.
I come from the Fresno area, and I take care of my husband. He had a stroke. He used to work for the city of Clovis. And we fought with the county there for over two years. And we did get a raise, a sixty cents raise. And so I came here to support my Kings workers and let them know that we're supporting them. And I don't think it's fair that they're making that little money for so much, for such hard work. They're doing, and that's why I'm here in support of them.
Yo vine a esta ciudad por primera vez, y me voy impresionada porque es una ciudad pequeña y muy limpia, y se ve mucha organización. Y es porque los trabajadores que trabajamos, que estamos trabajando, somos hispanos y estamos ganando el mínimo, y estamos poniéndole todo el infarto para que esté todo bien. Y este, pues yo solamente les pido que nos, que nos este, que nos apoyen para tener un mejor sueldo y una mejor vida.
I came to Hanford for the first time today, and I was very well impressed because the city looks clean. And I understand, it's my understanding that, I believe that most people that work in the city, maintenance, they're Hispanic. And the same thing as in healthcare workers. And I'm here just to ask you, please, they deserve more, these workers deserve more. Healthcare workers are hard workers, and that's what I'm here for.
Muchas gracias. Yo me sentí escuchada por ustedes, porque los miré a ustedes, a cada uno a los ojos, y yo vi que ustedes me están escuchando. Solo espero que pongan, pongan este, atención a lo que yo les pido.
I really thank you very, very much, and I understand. And I see you in the eye, and I know you're listening to me. And I'm just, and I know you're understanding. And I just hope that you guys make the right decision to help these people.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Ernesto Reyes.
Good morning. Thank you for being here.
Good morning. Thank you. My name is Ernesto Reyes, longtime resident here in Hanford. That's where I grew up, that's where I went to school. Now I have the opportunity to not only represent, but also fight for our long-term care workers. As you all know, there is a labor shortage. I'm reading articles that Target is planning on paying workers twenty-four dollars an hour. Other industries are paying a higher amount of wages, starting wages for their workers. And long-term care workers, IHSS workers, they don't take care of products, they take care of human beings. So we do have, we're coming out of a pandemic. Other counties at this time are giving raises to IHSS providers. Not only that, but they're also using the rescue plan to be able to give bonuses and address the fact that these IHSS providers fought through the pandemic. While this pandemic happened, the consumers, the recipients were the most vulnerable. Folks who have Down syndrome, folks who are elderly, they had vulnerabilities through this global pandemic. And our IHSS providers were labeled as essential workers. They had to go to work every day and provide the services, whether or not they had COVID or not. That is the reality of some of the workers, some of the work that our workers had to go through. So I asked you guys, I'm a proud Kings County resident. This is where I grew up. This is where I went to school. This is the board that made the decisions that affected my community. I encourage everybody to please listen to these home care workers. At this point, we are going into a phase where they haven't gotten a raise. And they're not asking for a lot. They're asking just to be respected. They're asking for you to provide the dignity that they provide for the people they take care of. Thank you for your time.
Good. Thank you.
That is all the speaker cards that I have turned in, and we do not see anyone online with their hand raised.
All right. Did everybody get a chance? Lance, you want to please state your name and address for the record, and then continue with your remarks.
Good morning. Thank you, sir. Lance Libergat, Kings County Job Training Office. Just wanted to bring to everybody's attention that today is the launch of the Small Business Assistance Program. There's one hundred and fifty-seven thousand. It's going out to small businesses in twenty-five-hundred-dollar increments across the county. There's also going to be two additional programs that'll roll out over the next two months. All told, this board will have obligated seven and a half million dollars to small business support over the last two years, which is doubling what it was previously. Just want to bring everybody's attention. If anyone from the public needs any information, feel free to swing by our office, call me directly, email, Facebook, we'll take anything. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Mr. Chairman? Your words are valid.
Chairman, thank you for doing that, Lance, and good work with the partnership out of Fresno. That being said, I saw the post last week. Is that only for small businesses with five employees or fewer?
Yes, so the eligibility requirements are listed on there. This is a micro enterprise loan. So it's based on gross revenue and then five full-time employees, although it's five full-time equivalents. So if there is part-time equivalents, we can move it over.
And you have that data from what we did during the last two years to know, to blast that out to small businesses specifically with five employees or less?
Yeah, and thank you to you guys. I know supervisors have been pretty critical in sending out who needs it, who needs contact and stuff like that. So we are going to get that out. It should be about two thousand businesses. We aren't going to be cold-calling this time simply because it's a very attenuated schedule. But we are going to be contacting those that have expressed interest previously, and then put it out through several different mediums. All right. Thank you.
Lance, you said loan, but it's a loan, but not to be paid back, correct?
Yes, and I apologize. Thank you for, it is a twenty-five-hundred-dollar, it's classified as a loan program. However, there is no requirement to pay it back. It has to be used for certain items. We are going to, that's part of our requirement to audit and make sure that it goes forward. However, this one is one of the most open ones we'll have put forward today, so thank you.
Good luck. Thank you. Thanks for being here. Good morning. Please state your name and address for the record, and then continue with your remarks.
Hey, my name's Liz Toppin. I have a business up in Fargo Crossing. I'm just looking at the agenda. I actually wasn't going to talk today. But so I'm looking at number six A. And I'm kind of wondering what this amendment to the agreement is with self-help enterprises extending the term of their agreement to a termination date of March twelfth. I don't know if we can get any clarification on that.
Two-sentence explanation of the self-help enterprise. And it's been a long-term, they've had a long-time relationship with Kings County in providing that service.
Okay, all right. So yeah, that just kind of gives some clarification to that. I also wanted to mention a comment that was made earlier. I think it's got to be very tough, and I mean no disrespect to your family at all. One of my concerns, though, is the fact that the gentleman stated that his son had a manic episode that landed him in jail. And this is where I think you're going to kind of see that a lot of us have concerns about that, especially when we have seniors in that community. I have elderly people that come to my business. You know, some of my staff, twenty-one years old, they're there at five o'clock in the morning. You know, it's like, I know I'm going to get there. Oh, well, can you put security cameras up? You know, can you call the police department? And these are things that we're really looking to avoid, right? I don't feel that my staff or my clients for my business, and yes, very much my, should have to potentially deal with a situation like that. So when you're hearing us talk about this project, it's not that we're against the project, but I really feel a lot of things have slipped through the cracks, that everybody's just kind of hoping it's going to be okay. And when you look around at some of these other projects, there are problems that come with these projects, right? We've seen it many different places. You can Google it. You can look it up online. So I think, you know, we really have to have like a better program put in place. It's like, how are we going to handle these situations other than then we have to stress our police department when it's like, we have an incident here, or we've got people loitering there? Because it happens all the time already. So I just kind of hope that, again, it's taken into consideration when there are maybe extensions asked of this project or this company, that you're really looking into what does that mean long-term? Because I don't think you guys did at the very beginning.
Thank you.
I have Chris Jordan.
Chris Jordan, president of the class of nineteen-seventy-two. Morning, Chris. Thank you for being here.
I should have told you just to stay right here.
Good morning. Thank you for continuing to allow citizens of Hanford to speak about an issue. I'm not going to take much time, but I simply want for you to consider that at the end of the day, that people really are concerned about the decisions that are made that affect their lives. And there's something said about not being given that opportunity. And I think what has happened now that you've energized the community, but you still haven't answered questions that they had. And last we talked about it, and I believe a person spoke and said that this was not the forum for which when persons ask the board members questions, that that wasn't the setting in which they could speak. And I think your constituents wants to hear answers from each of you in terms of the questions that were asked. Can you give us answers? Can you let us know how you feel about this project now that we've spoken and given our point of view? Is there a response from you? I think the audience has gathered here today, gathered last week. They wanted to hear from you. And so when does that happen? When does that happen? We've expressed our views. When do we hear from you? This is a big issue. And many of us are surprised that it's not on the agenda today. It is on the agenda?
Yes, sir. Number staff update on question? Staff update, but not interaction.
So there's no interaction?
Correct.
Okay. Well, again, that's the kind of thing that we want, is an interaction from you. So that we understand the position that you have and the reason that you had to make the decisions that you have. And then any potential options that we can have hope that everything has been exhausted. And so we're looking for those kinds of responses from you.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Madam Clerk, do you have any other further record?
I do not.
Good morning. Please state your name and address for the record, and then continue with your remarks.
Susan Long, fifteen-twenty-eight Castor Way here in Hanford. I want to speak up on behalf of the mental health community. I think it is a shame that our community is not better educated. To hear the comments that are made here today and the assumptions that are made is embarrassing. Your neighbor could very well be that person that has a mental breakdown. You don't know. To make that assumption that that's what's going into this project when it's not, my understanding and what the lady from Behavioral Health has explained, these are functioning folks. People can have mental health issues and be functioning adults. For instance, I am one of them. And I am a program director for twenty-five years. I am, I have bouted about how well Kings County does on behavioral health and the support system that we have here. But the education of our community is lacking significantly. And I am embarrassed, significantly embarrassed. It's created, to me, the ignorance that has come about. And we need to do something about it.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do you have a record?
I have another speaker, Susan Metz.
Good morning. Please state your name.
My name is Susan Metz. I wasn't planning on speaking today, but there is a lot of avenues on both sides. People want good help for people that have help, that need help. We have no date programs in this valley. We have no extra help for the mental health. I understand that. My thing is, twenty-five years, almost twenty-five years ago, I moved across town. And one of those reasons I moved across town is I was doing home help. Nine and a fourth, there is a lot of low income, a lot of mental health. And the thing was, I was a single parent. My neighbor across the street got robbed. They ran through my yard. And that is not what I want for my family right now. Right now, my other children, my older children have grown. I am now raising a small grandchild who's ten years old. I do not feel safe because we live near the park. We're three blocks from this development. I understand we need help for people that need affordable housing. I totally understand that. However, I do not want this project near my home. Unfortunately, I will have to make that decision. I moved to this district for a couple of different reasons where I live at. One was school, which I love. And two was because of the safety of my neighborhood. Half of my neighborhood neighbors are single parents. And that has changed some over the years. Those individuals are facing the same dilemma that I am. And they will end up probably moving, and you will lose part of your residence in Hanford because of this development. People will start putting bars on their door, bars on their windows. I don't want to live in a neighborhood like that. I did not move to that neighborhood to have that happen. Like I said, I was robbed across, almost robbed across town. My neighbor was robbed, and they ran through my yard. I do not want that in my neighborhood.
Thank you. Yes.
And I do have mental health in my family. My dad was schizophrenic. He was a functional schizophrenic and did take medications. My daughter is bipolar and has chose to be homeless over the years. And again, has chosen to be homeless. Did not want help. So again, you have to make those choices for our community.
Thank you. Madam, we have one more. Morning, Jeff. Please state your name and address.
Jeff Mora, twenty-two oh four Charlie Chambers Drive. Good morning, Mr. Nevs, Mr. Vergundes, Mr. Verboom, Mr. Peterson, and Mr. Vaie. I just want to come and wish you guys the best. I've actually been praying for you guys and the decisions that you're about to make, which are tough ones. You see the firemen out here who are asking for, I believe, a half percent increase on a half percent tax to pay for some new equipment, that they haven't got a new engine in years. When was the last time you guys got a new engine? Been a while, huh? So that being said, you also have a bunch of people in here who want a raise. All has to do with money. And I don't envy the position that you guys are in, having to make these decisions. I do want to reiterate that this is more about location, location, location than anything else. The opposition that I've talked to, and I've talked to a lot of people in this town, it's not that we don't want to help. It's not that we don't want to give a handout. It's that we want these people to succeed. And we don't feel like the location that this is in is going to allow them to succeed. In a three-story unit in that particular area with the congestion and the businesses, the yoga studio and all that. um, the yoga studio and all that, being infiltrated with the, um, the people that are listed on their website as being allowed to come in, come and go freely from this facility. We just, we're not against mental health, we are all for it. I've said before, I will gladly donate my time at a facility, uh, and volunteer that is in a different location. The congestion, um, and anything else that's gonna come along with it, the extracurricular activities like she just mentioned, it's better suited in another part of our community. I don't envy the decision you guys have to make, but I hope that you do make the right one. Thank you very much. Have a good day.
Thank you. That concludes the unscheduled, uh, appearances of the morning. Uh, we'll now move on to the next item, which is a reporting out on closed session. Mr. Hill, would you like to report out on the two closed sessions? One on February eighth and one on February twenty-fourth?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Your board took no reportable actions on the February eighth or twenty-fourth meeting.
Very good. The, uh, next item is approval of the minutes. Um, can we take them both up, Diane, same time?
Yes, you may.
Uh, approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of February eighth and the regular minutes from the special meeting of February twenty-fourth, as the board had an opportunity to review those minutes. I'll move for approval. Second. Moved by Fagundes, seconded by Peterson. Thank you very much. Uh, further discussion? Hearing none. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Aye.
Doug Verboen?
Yes.
Craig Peterson?
Aye.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes.
Let the record show that, uh, the minutes of those two meetings stand approved, five in favor. The next item is the consent calendar. All items under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be acted upon by one motion, the request of any board member. Any item may be removed and made part of the regular agenda, as the board had an opportunity to review the consent calendar for this morning.
I'll approve as presented.
Moved by Verboen, seconded by Fagundes. Additional discussion? Hearing none. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Aye.
Doug Verboen?
Yes.
Craig Peterson?
Aye.
Richard Fagundes?
Let the record show that item stands approved, five in favor. Thank you very much, everyone. Uh, moving on to regular agenda items. First item comes from, uh, Community Development Agency. And Alex, you have the duty to talk about Self-Help Enterprises.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Alex Hernandez, Community Development Agency. Uh, so the purpose of this item today is to extend the term of the agreement number nineteen dash zero one eight with Self-Help Enterprises, uh, to implement, administer, and write as requested home CDBG, begin and count home program grants for an additional two years. Uh, the original agreement was entered into on March twelfth, twenty nineteen. There is no impact to the general fund. The grant administration and implementation funding for the additional two years will come out of the grants. Uh, the county currently has received from the Department of Housing and Community Development, as well as future grants awarded from HCD. Uh, currently, the county has three open grants, which have been received from HCD that Self-Help Enterprises is administering for the county. Two of those grants relate to the county's first-time homebuyer program, which assists income-qualified individuals with the purchase of their first home. Uh, the other grant is the county's CDBG COVID round one grant, which is providing subsistence payment assistance to citizens of Kings County who have been affected by COVID. Uh, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development sets the limits to a five-year contract. Uh, Self-Help Enterprises has satisfactorily administered the county's grants under the agreement, and the county desires to continue, uh, using Self-Help for grant administration services for the maximum time allowed by the guidelines. Uh, this amendment will extend the agreement through March twelfth, twenty twenty-four. Uh, the Community Development Agency anticipates that the county will be eligible to apply for additional first-time homebuyer funding through HCD within the next two years. And with this extension, Self-Help Enterprises would assist the county with the administration of those first-time homebuyer funds. Uh, any new grant application would come to your board through a public hearing, um, for your direct, for, for your direction. Uh, I want to make it clear that this extension is only for the first-time homebuyer program. Any new program that your board chooses to pursue would go through the proper procurement process, uh, when hiring a consultant. Uh, so that is all for my staff report, unless there are any questions, and our consultant is here today in case you have any questions for them.
Good, thank you, Alex. Are there questions or comments for Alex regarding the item? Further clarification? This is an action item. Chair will entertain a motion.
Some.
Moved by Peterson.
Second.
Seconded by Verboen. Thank you very much. Additional discussion? Hearing none. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Aye.
Doug Verboen?
Yes.
Craig Peterson?
Aye.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes.
Let the record show that item stands approved, five in favor. Thank you very much. Thanks, Alex. Uh, the next item comes from Human Resources. Consider approving the revised job spec for Economic Development Manager. Carolyn, good morning.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. Carolyn Leest, Principal Personnel Analyst with Human Resources. Human Resources is requesting approval for a job classification revision and range adjustment for Economic Development Manager in the training, job training office. This position is a management-level classification that is responsible for planning and administering the day-to-day activities of the Economic Development Division in the job training office. This position coordinates and manages the planning and implementation of the Economic Development Work Programs, including business attraction, retention, job creation, business assistance, marketing, and related functions. In two thousand and ten, this position was modified and the range of, was adjusted downwards to reflect reduced responsibilities. However, the current Economic Development Director's long-term succession strategy for the position includes a restoration of previous job responsibilities. This position requires a strong leadership role in promoting and marketing Kings County and its cities in order to retain and attract new businesses and industrial developments. Human Resources is requesting the board approve the revised job specification for Economic Development Manager, and set the salary at range two thirty-three point zero. The cost for the increase to this position for the remainder of the fiscal year is approximately one thousand four hundred and fifty dollars for the current incumbent's salary only. The funding for this position will be covered by the Work and Form Innovative, um, sorry, Workforce Innovative Opportunities Act, WIOA, and, uh, the Economic Development Corporation. And if there, that's all I have, unless there's any questions you have for me.
Thank you, Carolyn. Questions or comments from Carolyn regarding the item? This is an action item. Chair will entertain a motion.
Some.
Moved by Peterson.
Second.
Seconded by Verboen. Additional discussion? Hearing none. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Aye.
Doug Verboen?
Yes.
Craig Peterson?
Aye.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes.
Let the record show that item stands approved, five in favor. Thank you, Carolyn. Good job. Next item, uh, comes from Human Services, where we have two items to take up. Uh, first item is to approve an agreement with, at, uh, good morning, Sonia, uh, was that, um, a SpearNet?
Yes. Morning, Sonia Bougey, Human Services Agency Director. The first, uh, first item is requesting your board to approve an agreement with the SpearNet for, to provide adoption promotion and support services proactively to October first for, for our adoption services support. Um, this agreement would last through September thirty of twenty twenty-four. We are mandated to refer our child, for our kids that are removed through child welfare services and, and foster care that have not successfully reunified. Some of them end up going through adoption process, and the families for adopted kids are entitled to supportive services. This agreement is a result of an RFB, and we're continuing an agreement with a SpearNet who has provided services to us for the past several years, and have, again, successfully completed the RFB. So, that's the end of my report. If you have any questions, the request is to approve the agreement for next two years.
Good, thank you, Sonia. Questions, comments regarding the agreement?
Uh, just a quick question, Sonia. Um, I know previously you've provided some numbers to us based on, uh, uh, those folks that were assisting in Kings County today. What are those numbers?
Currently, we have over six hundred kids in our adoption services. So, these are the, these are the children. Most kids that are removed through foster care ended up reunified. The kids that have not reached permanency, either through exiting, uh, in the system or reunifying with their families, may end up in guardianships or in adoptions. Once the kids are adopted through our system, they're entitled to supportive services and adoption assistance for up to age eighteen. So, some of these kiddos may have been adopted years ago. We currently have just over six hundred kids in our adoptions. On a foster care side, so this is the kids that are either with their families, but there's a court involvement, or are, um, in out-of-home placement. We currently have three hundred and eight kids in out-of-home placement, and total of about four hundred and twenty kids, so about a hundred kids that are in, um, have court-appointed, they're with their families, but are in our family maintenance program.
Yeah, just unimaginable, you know, for, we need our size to have six hundred, uh, kids in a program like that.
Though I do want to share with you that in the past six years on the foster care, our number of kids in foster care system has decreased by almost half. So, twenty fifteen, we had six hundred and twenty-seven kids in foster care, in actual out-of-home placement. That number today is three hundred and eight. So, overall trajectory when it comes to our foster care has actually, we, we've done well, which means majority, majority of the kids end up going home and reunifying, or we're doing better with upfront services to prevent entry into foster care. So, numbers are high, but we're doing better.
Yep. Thanks for the update. And with that, uh, if there's no further questions, move for adoption.
Moved by Peterson.
Second.
Seconded by Verboen. Additional discussion? Hearing none. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley? Doug Verboen?
Yes.
Craig Peterson?
Aye.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes.
Let the record show that item stands approved, five in favor. The second item from Human Services deals with an agreement with the Kings County Office of Education. Sonia, would you like to continue?
Yes. This is a request to approve the agreement with Kings County Office of Education for leveraging of our Title IV dollars for foster care administrative funds. Um, both Office of Education and Human Services Agency have responsibility to foster youth when it comes to education. They get their funding through their locally, um, controlled formula funding, and we get our funding through the state and through federal government, through Title Foster, Title IV. Our ability to do some of these things jointly actually helps them increase their funding, and they're helping us with ensuring that our foster youth, um, meet their graduation, and when it comes to a, individual education plan, they assist our staff through this. So, this agreement is really a pass-through of four E federal dollars, using their map, their funding to leverage Title IV dollars, so they can help us meet our mission and help themselves meet their mission. Uh, this has been a multi-year agreement with, um, Office of Ed, and we're asking the board to extend it.
Thank you, Sonia. Questions or comments regarding this item?
I'll move for adoption. This is retroactive back to July first, right?
Yes, it is. So, this is one, and I do, um, want to own that. Uh, it is retroactive to July first. This is, we have identified a couple of agreements that we have come to your board retroactively. We could have done this better, so I do apologize for that. They have, they have not accessed any funds, and they have had their insurance, um, covering both of our departments. We have been trying, because of our new federal implementations, to improve how we partner. That said, we really could have done this better. We could have renewed the existing agreement and then came back with an amendment. Nothing significant has changed of how we partner, uh, but we wanted to, we wanted to include our new requirements that are coming from the feds in their support of us.
Thank you. The items been moved by Verboen?
Second.
Seconded by Peterson. Thank you very much. Additional discussion? Hearing none. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Aye.
Doug Verboen?
Yes.
Craig Peterson?
Aye.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes.
Let the record show that item stands approved, five in favor. Thank you very much, Sonia. Good luck. The next several items come from administration. Uh, first item is to adopt a resolution regarding Senate Bill thirteen eighty-three. And Matthew, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Matthew Boyett, Kings County Administration. Um, so before you, this morning is a resolution, uh, for Senate Bill six one nine, um, and it actually relates to Senate Bill thirteen eighty-three. And so, in two thousand and sixteen, the Senate passed SB thirteen eighty-three, which is a large overarching, uh, recycling and food recovering bill, um, that will mandate, um, everybody to, uh, recycle organic waste and, uh, recycle, uh, commercial food generators to, uh, divert some of their edible foods to, um, edible food, uh, organizations for, to then disperse back out into the community. Um, and so, the, one of the big goals of this bill was to actually reduce, uh, organic waste by fifty percent from levels that were produced in two thousand and fourteen. They want to reduce that by fifty percent by this calendar year, twenty twenty-two, and further reduce it, uh, seventy-five percent by twenty twenty-five. Um, and so, this SB thirteen eighty-three, the large overarching bill, actually went into effect January of this year. And so, in implementing such a large overarching, uh, you know, new mandate like this, um, many counties, including our own, um, have had troubles implementing exactly what thirteen eighty-three said by the, uh, you know, rather swift timeframe that they gave the counties. And so, um, last year in two thousand and twenty-one, the Senate passed SB six one nine, which is the resolution before you this morning, that actually allows, uh, for jurisdictions, um, civil and, and administrative penalty relief for non-compliance of SB thirteen eighty-three. So, what CalRecycle noticed as they were going through and touching base with all the counties and holding various webinars and everything, is they realized that the vast majority of counties within, uh, California, and vast majority of other jurisdictions, because, you know, there's cities and, uh, you know, um, community service districts and counties and things like that, um, the vast majority of jurisdictions were not ready for this, um, and not ready to implement by the timeframe in SB thirteen eighty-three. So, the Senate passed, uh, SB six one nine to give this civil and administrative penalty relief. And what six one nine does is, uh, each jurisdiction has to outline what their current deficiencies are, their current and ongoing deficiencies, um, basically outlining, uh, what they're non-compliant in as far as all the regulations in SB thirteen eighty-three, um, give a reason why they're so far behind, and, uh, more importantly, give a path forward to getting into compliance with, uh, you know, a timeframe of all of the various milestones to get to compliance. Um, and part of that, um, what they call the notice, uh, notice of intent to comply, or the NOIC, as they refer to it now, uh, part of that NOIC process is to bring a resolution before the governing, uh, board of a jurisdiction, um, for the governing board to, uh, basically formally, uh, notify, um, CalRecycle of their intent to comply with thirteen eighty-three. Um, and so, as, you know, over the last year, the county, we've had several, uh, bi-weekly internal meetings with all the various departments to see, what does this look like for our county? What does thirteen eighty-three do, not only to our various departments, but what does it mean for the residents? What does it mean for the current infrastructure and current logistics of, uh, recycling and refuse in the county? Um, and so, as we kind of went through that, um, you know, there was many challenges along the way, um, and these were all outlined in the, um, application that, um, I will be submitting to CalRecycle this afternoon, but, um, a couple of the main areas of challenges is, one, the county really hasn't had, uh, to be involved in something like this before, so Measure G, uh, you know, kind of, you know, uh, hindered us in knowing about this industry, having the connections, having the infrastructure, having the staff, and the capability to handle something like this. Um, and so, there's a, a, a big learning curve along the way as we continue to find what the best practice was to implement thirteen eighty-three. There's various different models you can choose, and, you know, we were kind of feeling our way through the dark as to what the best model would be. Um, so, Measure G kind of hindered the, uh, us in that regard. And obviously, you know, as, as I hate to bring it up and use it as a crutch, you know, COVID did impact it a little bit. Uh, I'm sure everybody's, you know, tired of hearing about how that, you know, negatively, uh, affected lots of things, but, um, truth of the matter is, with the low and irregular staffing patterns over the last couple of years, um, you know, things such as this, um, kind of got, you know, off-kilter a little bit as we shifted, uh, efforts and priorities to actually addressing the pandemic. Um, and so, that, that was a big one. And, and we're not alone in, in any of these, um, uh, conflicts and struggles that, you know, as I stated, many of the jurisdictions in California have faced, um, similar and, you know, some of the exact same challenges, and that's why the Senate actually passed six one nine, because they realized of, uh, you know, what, what they were asking the jurisdictions to do and the timeframe that they were asking to do it in. So, um, that's why they actually passed SB six one nine to give that, uh, relief. So, um, over the course of the last year, you know, we finally outlined a path forward, and that came, as I said, with several internal meetings, and, uh, once we outlined a path forward, we needed to involve, um, outside agencies. we needed to involve outside agencies. We were in constant contact with CalRecycle. And with our current infrastructure, we actually were in several meetings with our existing haulers to let them know our path forward to implement, because this is going to impact them. It's going to impact the residents. And as we met with them, we realized the various other steps that we still have to go through, steps that we really didn't know that we had to go through, because we've never really had to have the knowledge of this industry until now. And so, the path forward is to actually implement a franchise zone system where the county jurisdiction will be divided up into various franchise zones, and then the various existing haulers will be assigned to those zones, and then the residents within those zones will then be mandated to subscribe to this organic waste recycling service. And so, with that, you know, we're going to be talking about here in the, you know, recent future here of adjusting, you know, utility rates. And so, there's a whole process with that, Proposition 218. When we talk about adjusting rates, there's a whole process to allow the citizens time to review that and give public comment. And so, all these things that we've, you know, uncovered as we went through our various meetings with the existing haulers, who actually really have the expertise and, you know, have really helped us a lot, and we wouldn't even be here today without them. And so, conversations with them, conversations with CalRecycle have really brought us to where we are today. And even given our deficiencies, the several meetings we've had with CalRecycle, we've been very transparent with them as to what we thought of 619, some of our reservations, some of our thoughts on implementation. We've actually given them our path forward to where we are today and what we intend to do over the next year, over the course of this calendar year. And even though, as of right now, we're noncompliant with SB 1383, they're actually very pleased with the progress we have made. Many of the other jurisdictions that they've talked to, they're not even remotely close to where we are now. And so, that's, you know, at least gave us some sort of good feeling as to, you know, we're at least on the right path, you know. And we really wanted to give, you know, this implementation its due diligence and not cut any corners and really look at every regulation that we're going to be held to, because the penalties, you know, for noncompliance and negligence are fairly heavy. So taking our time and really getting this right was very important for us. And so, with that, before you this morning is the resolution basically notifying CalRecycle of our noncompliance, but more importantly, our path forward to compliance this calendar year and our commitment to implementing SB 1383. So with that, if anybody has any questions, I'm more than willing to answer them for you. And if I can't, I'm sure we have some of our other county department representatives that might be able to help me along the way. So, thank you.
Good. Thank you, Matthew. Questions? Supervisor Verboon?
So Measure G was passed by the voters, correct?
Excuse me?
Measure G was passed by the voters?
Yes.
To start 1883?
18?
1383.
1383? Yes.
Yeah, 1383. So if we don't approve this pathway, what's our repercussions?
It's my understanding, and if Cindy is anywhere, please correct me if I'm wrong, but it's my understanding that we do not have a choice to not implement 1383. It's a mandate on our jurisdiction. Now, with that said, we did apply for some waivers. The CalRecycle does allow for waivers for low population density areas. So census tracts with less than 75 people per square mile can be exempt from some of the regulations for up to five years. And we submitted all of the census tracts in our jurisdiction that that falls under, and we were granted waivers for five years under those census tracts. But there is still an area in our jurisdiction between Lemoore and Hanford, kind of in that Armona area, that we are responsible with for implementation. And so, this isn't something that we can't say, hey, you know, we have Measure G in place, we can't implement 1383, we have to implement 1383.
And this is just a California law, correct?
Correct. Yes.
Additional questions?
Yeah, just a comment, Mr. Chairman. For a while there, I know we were asking staff whenever there was anything to do with the Senate bill or Assembly bill to attach a copy of the bill analysis on here so we could get that background. And it was happening for a while, so just a friendly reminder. But I looked it up right now, SB 619. And it's a little confusing since we're talking about two different bills here.
Yeah, it's-
Same conversation, and the memo is a little confusing. But looking at SB 619, there's zero opposition in the Assembly or the Senate to the bills that moved from committee through Assembly through Senate. So that being said, just you could provide a little bit more background on it, make it easier than having to look it up.
Sure.
Because there's not always time. You gave a lengthy presentation, but sometimes things move quick and you try to look something up and-
Absolutely. Yeah. And, you know, even in our conversations internally and with, you know, our haulers and CalRecycle, you know, we tend to use SB 619 and SB 1383, kind of, you know, interchange them. But to clear up any of the, you know, confusion on, you know, which is which. So SB 1383 is the actual organic waste and recycling and edible food recovery bill that all the jurisdictions are mandated to comply by as of January 1 of this calendar year. And SB 619 was a separate bill that was passed to address the vast majority of jurisdictions within the state to address their noncompliance with the bill. So-
Yeah, through financial penalties, right?
There are financial penalties built into SB 1383. And so, what SB 619 allows for is for jurisdictions to basically notify CalRecycle of their noncompliance with SB 1383 to help relieve any exposure to those penalties for the calendar year. And that, in order to do so, you know, each jurisdiction has to outline their path forward, you know, what your deficiencies are and what your path forward to cover those deficiencies are. So that way, CalRecycle understands, you know, your path towards compliance.
All right. Thank you for the information and follow-up. Thanks, sir.
You're welcome. Yes, sir.
Supervisor Peterson?
Yeah, just to talk a moment about compliance and enforcement, I guess, from that aspect. And obviously, this comes with no funding, right?
Correct.
Yeah. So with respect to compliance and the mandate, what's the intention, I guess, of administration and how we structure this? I mean, it just plays off of another public health inspection requirement or environmental health?
There's actually multiple components. There's a public health component for the organic food recovery and recycling. There's also inspections at the landfills and the folks that receive this. There's also a component of compliance with the haulers, as well as the individuals that provide the separation for those items. So it's actually a wide, broad approach with the JPA, Public Works, Community Development, and Public Health. It's pretty wide. In addition, as you mentioned and as you pointed out, there is no funding for this, but the legislation is very clear that, you know, organizations and JPAs and waste haulers can change fees in order to support the demands on this. Of course, that's not popular, but that's the only recourse that we have.
Thank you. Additional questions or comments?
Diane was getting ready to say something when I asked a question about the goal. I want to hear what she has to say.
I just wanted to make sure that I provided any legal opinion and supported Matt in what he said. I do concur with what he said. And they are, it is required by law.
In California?
In California.
But in the rest of the state, they don't, this is not a problem. Only California. So I go to Smart'n Final, I buy me a couple chickens, feed it to my dogs, and I'm responsible to have a separate container for my chicken bones in my trash? Is that what I'm hearing?
I'm not a refusing recycling expert, but generally, there's going to be, you know, source separation of organic waste and stuff like that required, depending on the exact system, whether it's a one bin, two bin, three bin system that, you know, we ultimately roll out with the haulers. And so, there-
If you live in a country and you have, say, a small farm, you feed your scraps to your pig, are you illegal for doing that, or is that legal?
Excuse me? Say that again?
If you take your extra scraps and you feed them to your pigs or your animals, is that illegal or going to be illegal in the future?
That I don't know. I don't want to opine on that if I'm not, you know, 100% sure on the, you know, legality of that.
I'm just afraid to vote for something that even though we're supposed to do it and we're supposed to follow mine, just like we did with the housing project, this is an overreach and it's going to continue. Pretty soon, we'll be catching our dog poop and putting it in a separate bin instead of burying it in our yard. So, I mean, do we vote for this or are we going to fight right now? That's a legal-
Is that a question?
That's a legal question.
Oh, okay. Well, if you guys do not want to move forward with an SB 1383 resolution, then the county can explore what options it has to challenge the act itself. I would say, under the act, there are obligations for the counties and penalties associated. So if the county does not comply, then there will be penalties associated, and we can look at that.
And what is, is the city working on this too, do you know?
Yes, every jurisdiction.
They have a bigger blueprint of what it looked like than we do. We just have the smaller, I mean, Hanford and LeMoyne, right?
Right.
Anything with 75 residents in a square mile over that.
Yeah, we're all-
I just think, you know, I went to Washington DC last week, and I sat in on a couple of meetings there. This never came up. They talked about PFAS. PFAS is a big deal. They had a two-hour talking deal in one of our conventions about, you know, we got to get PFAS under control, PFAS under control. Never once told them what PFAS was. Well, it's popcorn bags and coffee cups and paper straws, which is a bigger problem than organic waste. It's a perishable item that will disappear over time. And now, we got to get control of it before it disappears. And I just think it's an overreach. It's a county, I mean, I guess I can support it if it keeps the county from getting fined, but this is just a typical overreach of government coming into our community and telling you what you can do with your scraps after you clean your plate, right? Yeah, it's ridiculous.
Yeah. And just to clarify Supervisor Verboon's points, the resolution before you this morning isn't, you know, implementing 1383. It's just, you know, formally recognizing our intent to, you know, be relieved of potential civil and administrative penalties.
We're not ready yet. We're not compliant for here. Here's our reason.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, I get it. I just, we're in a bad position.
Yeah.
Dominic, are you stretching your legs or you want to say something?
Yeah. Our superstar of the group.
Yeah.
I wouldn't say-
Want to talk garbage?
Yeah, let's talk garbage. Dominic Tiberzki, Public Works Director. So just Supervisor Verboon, I want to address your question. So the primary reason of the bill, or one of the main things that we're trying to, or the state's trying to achieve, is reduce greenhouse gas emissions. So by diverting the green waste into separate collection, it's then going to be diverted to a compost facility, and the gases are intended to be, you know, contained within. And then, that's actually going to produce a commodity that can be sold. So going back to your question, I don't see anything in the bill that prevents you from feeding, you know, your pigs, whatever you like to feed them. The intent is to get people to stop putting the green waste in the trash bin and put it in a separate receptacle. Now, there's other components, as Matt mentioned. There's edible food recovery, there's recycled material procurement. It is a very broad law. But to comment on your question, that's the purpose of it.
All right, thanks, sir. Thank you, Dominic. Additional questions or comments for Matthew? This is the next item. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, just to try to attempt to move the agenda forward, I'll just go ahead and make the motion on the resolution.
Thank you.
Yep.
Second. Moved by Valley, seconded by Peterson. Additional discussion? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Aye.
Doug Verboon?
No.
Craig Peterson?
Aye.
Richard Fagundes?
Let the record show, three in favor, two in opposition. And so, we will move on to the third item from administration, which is consider a ground lease agreement with Lacy Campus Partners. And-
CSAC's first.
Yeah, CSAC's first. Oh, I forgot one. Never mind. Let's go back. Talk about the designation of the county representative for the Kings County to, on the excess insurance authority. Sorry.
It's fine. Good morning, Board members. Kiri Martinez, Assistant County Administrative Officer. Today, I'm here before your board to present the CSAC Excess Insurance Authority, which was formed for California counties in 1979, part of the California State Association's county. Today, 55 out of 58 counties participate. Kings County is a voting member. The Board of Directors for the CSAC Excess Insurance Authority is made up of county representatives. Kings County needs to designate a new representative to the board due to a current vacancy in our department. It is important for Kings County to have the ability to vote on matters that it can affect the program services, such as excess insurance for general liability and workers' compensation and for medical malpractice. At this time, we request to designate Edward Hill County Administrative Officer as a representative for Kings County to the Board of Directors for the California State Association of County's Excess Insurance Authority, and designate Francesca LeZola Risk Technician as the designated alternative for Kings County.
Thank you, Kiri. Questions or comments regarding the nominees?
Did she say that our county administrator's excess liability here?
I'll make a motion to approve what's presented.
Second. You, Doug? Seconded by Peterson. Thank you very much. Moved by Verboon, seconded by Peterson. Additional discussion? Any background checks requested? The clerk, please call the roll.
And that, by motion, counts as a second for the alternate, too.
Oh, yeah. So you're going to combine them?
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
You okay with that?
Second.
Okay. It's been amended to make both of those appointments at the same.
That is a friendly amendment, and it can go forward.
Additional questions or comments or clarification? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Aye.
Doug Verboon?
Yes.
Craig Peterson?
Aye.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes. Let the record show, those nominees have been confirmed. Thank you very much. Now, the next item is to approve the ground lease agreement with Lacy Campus Partners.
Good morning, Board members. Kiri Martinez, again, Assistant CAO. So our current county property sits on a vacant approximately 44,000-square-foot building that used to be the county hospital up until 1973. The current building has long corridors that run the length of the building with small patient rooms on both sides. After the building was used as a hospital, it was used by various agencies, being the last, the Kings Community Action Organization. KCAL moved out in 2008, leaving the building, with only the county morgue operating in the building up until 2014. Up until about a year and a half, the building was used for training by the sheriff's office and our fire department. Over the several years, the county workforce has increased to approximately 1,620 full-time employees needing space to accommodate growth. The county workforce in five years have increased over 85 positions, and the county is growing on an average rate of 2% per year. Lacy Campus Partners, LP, a partnership that includes a local developer, an Orange County-based painter, Realty and Investments, has proposed to design, alter, and lease to the county the former hospital building located at 1222 West Lacy Boulevard with the intention to remodel and build for county use. Recent interest expressed by the Human Services Agency and the Behavioral Health Department to expand the scope of search for their office space, the proposed design alteration and lease agreement is the result of these efforts. Currently, the Behavioral Health Department is leasing space at an outside facility that is not located on county grounds. Their current location is across County Drive, located by other private businesses. By bringing the entire Behavioral Health Department onto county grounds, we will ensure that county services are located in a one location, providing the residents the opportunity to find services in a one-stop-shop. Behavioral Health will be moving the entire department. This includes their executive teams and their four divisions, which is Administration, Contract Compliance, Mental Health Services, and Quality Assurance Division, their clinical division, including their adult system of care, and their children's system of care. The Human Services Agency, HSA, will also be moving their current CalWorks Employment and Training and Housing Support Services Division into the new space. They currently reside in Human Services Building 8. The CalWorks Employment Program provides case management, educational, work experience, job training for families of CalWork. The program is also intended to host support, transportation, childcare, and variety of family services, including access to mental health and assist abuse services. The proposed lease has an initial term of 25 years with a five-year option for renewal that includes the option to purchase the building after 10 years at fair market value. This purchase option provides the county an opportunity to acquire the building as soon as 10 years after the lease execution, which could result in savings for the life of the project. Base rental payments will be $102,885 per month for the first year at $2.35 per square foot with an increase of 2% annually. Both Human Services and Behavioral Health budget will fund the annual rent payments. Both departments are committing to the financial obligation of this lease agreement payment without any additional monies from the general fund at this time or in the future. Additionally, the county will be responsible for installing furniture, security, railing systems, IT equipment, and signage on the building. This one-time cost is estimated at $375,000 and will be in the recommended budget next year. Another additional cost will include construction manager oversight of the project, estimated at $300,000, which will be presented to your board after the execution of this agreement. At this time, this one-time cost will be budgeted for next fiscal year as well. In current market value, a building of similar size from construction, from ground-up construction, would have cost the county approximately $600, $800 per square foot for a total cost of $26 to $35 million. This includes the demolition of the current property. A new popular construction design for government buildings, which are deemed more cost-effective, are modular buildings, and a new modular building in current market value in the similar size would cost approximately- size would cost approximately 500 to 700 per square feet for approximately $22 million to $30 million. The project is currently being managed by county administration with coordination with our contracted capital project management banner, Public Works, Community Development, Job Training Office, and County Council and outside council, Lozano Smith. Is it anticipated, if the agreement commences, the county will enter into an amended contract with Banner? Anticipated date of completion is March 31, 2023, with a move-in date of June 1 through June 30 of next year. Today, I do have the local developer, Sunny, Painter Realtors developers, Jim Sanders, and Kyler Crocker. And Mr. Sanders does have a statement to provide to the board.
Good, thank you.
Does Kyler Crocker have a statement, too?
Yeah, he always has a statement. Don't open that door.
Before you be quiet.
Oh. Good morning. Thank you for being here.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Jim Sanders. I serve as Executive Vice President for Painter Realty Investments, Inc. I'll keep it brief, but I just want to say, we are very pleased to be bringing this project before you today. This is no doubt going to be an incredible transformation project. We all know what the exterior of the building looks like today. When we toured the building for the first time, it was a little ominous inside, to say the least. But looking beyond the state of the building currently, what we see and what we're so excited for is to see this once great building brought back to its prominence within the community. With so many members of the community having a memory or two or more of what it meant to them, what it used to be, it is an honor to be a part of the planning and development of this project. And really, more broadly, we're excited to bring the building forward once again to be a part of the core of the community. We're very appreciative of the efforts of the staff to date, and all of you are a true pleasure to work with. With that, we request your approval today, and I'm here for any questions that you may have.
Good, thank you. Any questions or comments? Supervisor Valley?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, Mr. Chairman, I was, I was a little confused here because I'm looking, you know, when we got the, the board packet, the subject says old hospital remodel, sales lease agreement. And when I was going through it, double checking this morning, I had to go through the agenda five times to find where this was at, because it's not labeled like that on the agenda. It's a little, it's a little confusing. The, the items just listed is ident, the only identification is listed as 1222 West Lacy Boulevard. And I think it should have matched up a little bit more heading with the heading here. That being said, there's just a couple of things. There's a lot of under fiscal impact here. And by the way, thank you for the information, Steph. I know you're doing a lot, a lot of good work. But under fiscal impact here, it says that the rental payment will be $162,885 per month for the first year. But then it goes on to say that both Human Services and Behavioral Health budgets will fund the annual rental payment. Both departments are committed to the financial obligation of the lease agreement without any additional monies from the county general fund at this time or in the future. And that's a big statement to make. And, you know, just to have this here on the memo, I would, I would like more time to see more concrete documentation of that. Because what worries me is, even though they're saying that they're not going to go after the general fund or any of the other minimal resources we have for Stratford's and Armona's and Kettleman Cities and Home Gardens, it goes on to list, as you outlined, all these costs that are one-time costs for furniture, for the construction management oversight. There's another 200, 300,000. And one-time cost to me, when you're saying these will be, we're going to learn where these one-time costs are going to come from when we sit down for budget this summer. I don't like casting votes when I don't know where the money's from, because then when we sit down and we start talking about things we need, curb, got our sidewalk, infrastructure, water, when our communities run low on water, which by the way, the 0% water allocation is going to affect our county tremendously. That was not fun reading that again this morning in the Hanford Sedna. I don't, I don't like putting this out there like that, Mr. Chair, at this time, without enough information. I'd, I'd be happier if staff came back and broke down, broke down these fiscal impacts even more. So, so we could cast a vote with confidence, yea or no, with confidence. But at this time, I'm just not seeing enough, enough financial information here to, to make a decision this morning. And I'll leave it right there. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Well, thanks for the presentation this morning. I think this is an exciting opportunity to revive an old building. You know, I go back, I'm a graduate of Hanford High School. I think back to the day they tried to knock down the East Campus building. They had to go get a bigger ball because the ball wouldn't bring the building down. But for some reason, there was an earthquake concern there. The structure that came out of that was a prison. I was one of the first classes to, to attend the prison. And so I think, you know, I think there are times, you know, places in time where there are opportunities that present themselves. I think this is one of those times, you know, from my colleagues' concerns, much of this is going to be supported through these state programs, the state mandated programs. And, and, you know, we have numerous organizations off campus. It's the same scenario. Their, their, their funding comes through state programs and help pay for the locations that they're at. And I, I just think, you know, it's an old building. I can only imagine if we say, you know, we're going to knock this building down. And, you know, the people that have been born there, I think I may even, my first set of stitches may have, may have come out of that building at the age of six, which is when I used to have dark hair. But I, I think this is a, this is a wonderful opportunity. It's an affordable way to bring staff. The other concern I have is, you know, our health department, I don't know, when was that constructed? Fifty?
The, the building construction vary, but the oldest one is in the 50s.
Yeah. So I, I think it's, it's a, it's a financially responsible way to step forward with reasonable residents for a number of our, our departments here that, that, again, is, is an affordable way to step into this. I've been a proponent of, of P3 opportunities, you know, to try and assist, to try and capture the same thing that I think we're going to capture here. And that is that the state is going to pay for the residency of these departments. And at the end of the day, you know, somehow, we're going to own these, these properties. They're on our campus. And, and I think it, it, one, it brings a higher level of responsibility, you know, on our part, that when you come to the campus, you can do it here. You know, you can, you can, you can find the services, and you can, you can have those services rendered on campus. And, and I think there's a lot to be said for that as well. So I'm in support of this. I think it's a great opportunity to, to, to save some historic value in this county. And, and, and I just worry what we would have if we knocked it down and, and, you know, built another prison in Kings County.
Thank you. Supervisor Verboon?
Yeah. So thank you for, thank you, Connor, for bringing the painters to our county. I appreciate that. I toured us with the people that have done renovation. It's an old building that needs a lot of love. We don't build buildings, and we don't have the P that gets it done. They do. They have done a lot of retrofitting in downtown Biscaya. Appreciate their work. You know, on my commercial side, you know, the, the rent's a little high, but, you know, they're putting a lot of their own money into it at first. So that would be my only concern. But, you know, it's government money, and they're going to have a good clientele to rent it from them. We're already paying rent now, equal to what they're getting here. So like Craig said, everybody can be on one campus. So you can do your one-stop-shop parking, parking lot, and hit all the places you need to hit at one time. So that's good. I want to see the building fixed up and cleaned up. That's a nice picture. I hope it comes out like that. I like the white and the red roof. I think it'll look good. A lot of people in the community over the last 20 years complained about what are we going to do with this building? Now we can say what we're going to do with the building. So I'll make a motion to support this resolution as it's presented. And thank you for bringing to our attention. Look forward to the ribbon cutting.
Or the groundbreaking.
Groundbreaking. Well, with ground's already there.
Ground's already broke, but, you know, there will be some rehab there.
I think, does it go, are we doing anything with a round building, too, or that's a second phase? Or not a phase? Or I'm not supposed to bring it up?
It's not a phase.
All right, got it.
Not a phase.
Yeah.
Phase.
At this time, we request your board to approve the ground lease agreement with Lacy Campus Partners LP for the premises located at 1222 West Lacy Boulevard in Hanford for an initial 25-year term with a three, five-year option for renewal. Approve the purchase agreement with Lacy Campus Partners LP for the real property located at 1222 West Lacy Boulevard in Hanford. Approve the post-construction lease agreement with Lacy Campus Partners LP for the real property at 1220, 1220, 1222 West Lacy Boulevard in Hanford, and authorize the county administrative officer or his designate to sign the intended rent commencement letter.
I think that's what Doug said.
It was four separate action. Three different records.
What she said.
Okay, good, very good. Moved by Verboon. Looking for a second? Second by Peterson. Thank you very much. Additional discussion on the plan? Supervisor Valley?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I want to be supportive of the project. It is a good project. There's obviously a lot of good points are pointed out in the presentation, and some of the points my colleagues brought up as far as the one-stop. But, Mr. Chairman, can, can, I'd like a couple of my concerns on, just on the fiscal side, if there's a department head who could speak to that. And this is just going back again to, in the summertime, when we roll out the, the budget on especially hazardous waste tax monies. And, and those limited monies, we see a large list of what people, department heads put in for, whether it's remodeling of the roof, or new furniture, or new carpet. And again, those funds right there, you know, we talk about every summer on, 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 on helping our smaller communities with those funds. We have a very limited pot of money. So can I get that commitment that we're not, that you're not going to come for your one-time monies here to hazardous waste tax revenue? Or do our community development block grant funds, those are two that I'm important about. And to be supportive, I want to make sure that that's not going to take a hit here, because there's a lot we need to do in the communities as far as beautification. Thank you.
Welcome back, Sonia. Thank you.
Sonia, we're getting Human Services Agency. So I'm speaking on the Human Services Agency portion of the one-time cost. And the answer to your question is yes, we will not be asking for other pots of funds, including general fund, to fund the furniture and one-time costs. And actually, how this lease is structured, because one-time costs will come next year, that, and lease will happen right after that, and will go through the cost plan. It actually will help to spread the costs over time. Our state and federal funding sources that fund our programs would actually be charged for these one-time costs and for ongoing rent.
Okay. I'm going to date and timestamp that on the YouTube video, and if you guys ever come back. Okay, thank you.
Supervisor, I can, Dr. Lewis, sorry, Lisa Lewis from Behavioral Health, I can affirm the same thing from the Behavioral Health Department.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate, thanks for taking the time for that, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to be supportive. Thank you.
Additional questions or comments? That item's been moved by Verboon, seconded by Peterson. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Aye.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Craig Peterson.
Aye.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes. Let the item reflect that it was 5-0, so thank you very much. The next item comes as a North Star Court update. And Mr. Hill, you want to lead the discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As known, your board held a special meeting on February 24th to take public comment, as well as consider up Star, North Star, or excuse me, up North Star property and the whole person care funds. During that meeting, a member of the public submitted questions in writing. We have had Dr. Lewis take those questions and provide answers for those. And today's, she is here to provide that update.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Good morning, Dr. Lewis. Thank you for being here.
Hello, Lisa Lewis, Behavioral Health Department, Kings County. Thank you for the opportunity to answer these questions today. We had 11 questions that were submitted by John Darpley, which I think represented many of the questions and concerns from the community. And I'm going to go through them individually in just a minute and answer them. There are repeating themes that I have found by reading these quite a few times. And so I just wanted to give quite a brief overview that I think I'll refer back to as we go forward, okay? And I also just want to acknowledge the, both the compassion and the concern of our community. I understand the feelings, and I also appreciate the compassion that's been expressed about providing care for our behavioral health folks. One thing to be aware of is that this, this partnership was done with our department as a partner, as a service partner. And what that means is, the services provided at this development will be a partnership between Upholding, who is the builder, and the manager, so the, the program manager, I'm sorry, the property manager, between SelfHelp, who is going to provide a community initiatives manager, and between our department, the Behavioral Health Department, who's going to provide a case manager and a peer support specialist. This is a collaborative team of services. This is very similar to what we do in other areas of behavioral health now in the last few years. We use collaborative teams that work really closely with people on an individual and daily basis. This is the most effective way to do outpatient behavioral health work. And so that's what I'm going to refer back to as we kind of go forward, okay, in the questions. The first question, no, I want to thank John Darpley for the questions. The first question, is, is it true that no one can be denied housing at North Star Court if they are coming from an institution such as mental health hospital, jail, or prison? And here's the answer. No one can be denied housing at North Star Court based solely on previous incarceration or psychiatric hospitalization. However, the behavioral health staff will be conducting an intake assessment to determine if an applicant is appropriate for this level of housing. If they require more intensive services or supports, such as a high-level act team with housing, for people who are not stable on medications and not able to live independently, the person will be referred to the appropriate level of care and housing. Additionally, an applicant can be disqualified for other factors, such as criminal convictions that are related to housing, or the lack of income to pay rent. Also, North Star Court is a permanent supportive housing property. This is not transitional housing. Transitional housing is temporary housing that's used for stabilization. It is not a homeless shelter. It is not a board and care. It is not a room and board. There's also not a reentry program. There is no program in North Star Court that is, court that is used, is going to use the property to house short-term residents and then transition them out. So permanent supportive housing with the team working together. All tenants must comply, or must complete an application and screening process that includes a background check, rental history, and verification of income. They must live independently, have their own income, which they intend to use to pay rent, and they must sign their own lease and live by the conditions of the lease. The credit and criminal history inquiry will be completed on each applicant, and the applicants will live according to the criteria of the lease. Community members will be required, oh, community members who are required to register as sex offenders are not eligible to live at North Star Court. Okay. Question number two. Am I, am I, okay. Is it true that priority be given to adults with serious mental illness, children with severe emotional disorders, and their families? Yes, for the 22 units that our department is going to work very specifically with, people with a mental health disorder or children with an emotional disorder will be qualified for those particular units. Now, we're talking about, it could be veterans with PTSD. It could be someone with bipolar disorder who is taking medications and working with our department. It, it needs to be somebody who qualifies for outpatient mental health care, okay? And they will be working collaboratively with those teams. So again, we're going back to this collaborative work environment, where if somebody has a special need, or they are needing special intervention from, say, substance use disorder treatment, or they need some other care from behavioral health that they're not getting right now, our onsite team is going to work closely with all of the different partners to make sure they're getting what they need. Okay. Question number three. Is it true that tenants will be accepted regardless of sobriety or... or participation in services or treatment or history of incarceration? Um, yes, it is true. Sobriety and participation in behavioral health services is not a condition of tenancy. All mental health treatment and sobriety treatment is, is voluntary. We cannot compel that for purposes of housing, anybody, um, anywhere. It's illegal um for um, it's a violation of housing laws if you condition tenancy on sobriety. Drug and alcohol addictions are harmful to everyone in every neighborhood, but no type of housing can be based upon sobriety. However, illegal substances will not be permitted onsite and any, any reported usage will be investigated and result in a referral to a substance use disorder treatment program and/or eviction. Uh, North Star Court will provide services and programs for any tenant who would like help with addiction. And again, this is where they partner with my department, so Kings County Behavioral Health will provide referrals. And if you, if you think about it, as we work with our community partners, as we work with our clients, everything is based on relationship and outpatient mental health services now. It's trying to build trust. It's seeing people often. It's giving them multiple opportunities to engage in services. So if you think about seeing them on the premises where they live, we're gonna be seeing these folks every day. We're gonna know all about each other. We're gonna be in the garden together, in the kitchen together, in your apartment together. There's gonna be a lot of collaboration. And that allows us as the behavioral health department to have a very good idea what's happening with somebody, how we can intervene, and also to have built that relationship. So when the day comes, a person says, yeah, I need help and I want some intervention. Number four. Is it true that once a person becomes a tenant at North Star Court, they will not be required to be a tenant, a client of the county behavioral health department or recipient of mental health or other services qualified to remain in the assisted unit? Again, it's always voluntary to receive uh behavioral health services. See. And again, it's, it's illegal um to condition tenancy on any kind of health treatment, behavioral health treatment, or substance use disorder treatment. And again, this is where the collaborative team approach comes in. Number five. The guiding principles document from your website states, and this is from the Upholdings website, states that we promote lease compliance and we encourage tenant responsibility. Why are these things not required of a tenant? Each and every tenant at North Star Court will be bound to a legally enforceable lease. In the event a lease agreement is breached or violated, the property management and support staff will try to solve the problem and return the person to lease compliance. The partnership between Upholdings, SelfHelp, and Kings County Behavioral Health come into play in this situation. Every partner will be working to assist the tenant to help them come into compliance with their lease and/or to get the assistance that they need. If needed, the client can be assisted in moving to a more appropriate housing environment like ACT or Boarding Care. If these efforts, efforts are not successful, the tenant can be evicted. This is post-COVID when nobody could be evicted, but at this time they can be evicted. And um, we try to avoid that because having an eviction on your uh record is a, is a really difficult thing. And so, for instance, if our department realizes that somebody needed a higher level of care and they should be working with ACT, they could live in the ACT housing and we would encourage and work with them to do that. Um, number six. Will North Star Court house, house only those from Kings County? If the answer is no, why are other counties allowed to place tenants in our county? Um, well, the first thing is nobody is placed. So um, tenants will identify North Star Court on their own. Local referrals will be done through Kings County Behavioral Health, community organizations, and the property management staff marketing plan. Limited, um, limiting leases just to Kings County would infringe on in, individual constitutional freedoms to move throughout the United States. However, it is expected that those who know about and hope to live in North Star Courts will very likely be people who currently need housing in Kings County. Number seven. What constitutes a service-rich environment? Well, again, um, we will have this uh very close team working together. And I'm just gonna give you an example of some of the things that we are gonna do. The property management will, manager will live on the property and work for North Star, and that's um 24/7. There will then be, through SelfHelp, the community um, community um initiatives manager um who will be doing things like community building, all kinds of social activities and stuff. And I'm gonna read some of them to you. And then, of course, there'll be our case manager and our peer support specialist. So here are some of the examples of some of the things we're gonna be doing together. Tenant engagement, an orientation uh meeting and that will work with all new tenants to see what their needs are and how we can work with them. Uh, focus on developing relationships both in the community and in the larger community. Supportive services. We will develop a wellness plan for each individual. We will link them to social services. We'll provide mental health treatment, substance use disorder treatment, and co-occurring disorder treatment with primary care if needed. We'll collect, connect them to what they need. Um, we will provide educational opportunities, volunteer and job training opportunities, transportation, and also information about how to get access to trans, to transportation. Um, life skills, daily living, cooking classes, housekeeping, budget, um, money management, laundry, cooking, meal prep, shopping, financial literacy, basic nutrition, community skills, and our favorite, the public garden. We will have coordination with property management. So as they're overseeing the lease and the compliance and the living um capabilities of the tenants, they'll work really closely with us to see what else we can do to augment and help those. Um, we will also work to help people get access to um social security if they need to qualify for SSI or they need to get MedICOM, they don't have it yet. Work on all those various aspects of supportive services. Number eight. What are the house rules that are listed on your uh bullet point fact sheet? Excuse me, I want to make sure I'm on the right page here. Okay. Uh, the developer's property management company created house rules many years ago to help communicate expectations to the tenants. The house rules is a booklet and an addendum to the lease and explains the tenant uh property rules, um, such as which type of satellite or barbecue are they allowed to have on the property. The house rules is a list of situations common to living in a multifamily property and is a tool for the property management company to maintain a clean and safe environment. The house rules for North Star Court will be developed in collaboration with SelfHelp and Kings County Behavioral Health. So it's something to be done as we go forward. Number nine. Uh, will after-school services be provided for the entire community or only for the residents? At this time, after-school program services will only be provided to North Star Court's residents. The developer has had many years of experience using services on and off their properties to benefit the community. Um, and the staff will consistently consider ways to provide more access for more services. Number 10. How will services be provided onsite with um live-in service providers if only one unit is reserved for onsite services? So the one unit that is reserved is for the property manager. The other services, so the social services and the Kings County Behavioral Health Services will be Monday through Friday, um, 8 to 5. But also, we will make an agreement about who would um assist during the night or on the weekends. So that's something that we will be working on together. But just to be clear, um, this is not a healthcare facility, so we are not providing healthcare there. So it's not required or, or needed to have 24/7 mental health or service staff onsite. Um, number 11. Um, is it true that your organization is not required to offer services for tenants suffering from co-occurring mental health and physical disabilities or co-occurring mental and substance use disorders? I think they were referring to North Star. And no, North Star is not required to do that, but the Kings County Behavioral Health Department is required to do that. And so many of the services I've just described to you are our mandated services that we are gonna be providing for these folks regardless. And so the fact that we would have the opportunity to do them in a housing environment where folks are, are housed and that we are, working with them daily is a benefit to our ability to do effective services. Um, and the other thing I wanted to say, I just wanted to assure the board that we will monitor and adhere to the requirements of the program and the contract. We expect excellence in our collaborative relationships and we will work tirelessly with North Star Court to have this be a success, both for the tenants living in the um development and the surrounding neighborhood. I very much welcome um communication and phone calls or emails from the community. I want to continue the dialogue and I appreciate what people have been willing to share with me. So I'm open to taking any other questions you might have.
Good, thank you, Dr. Lewis. Questions, comments, concerns?
So, one question that has been brought up numerous times is the fact of what involvement that we have in location of the property and purchase of the property? And when Upholding purchases the property, do, do they need our participation? Or they, can they build it without our support?
No, we didn't, we weren't involved in the selection. And um, no, they don't need our participation. This is a private um sale from private seller to private buyer, so.
We had no connection.
No, we had no connection with that.
But we have a contract for 20 years to provide service.
Yes. Oh, Supervisor Verboon, that's a very important thing I didn't say. We have a contract for 20 years to provide services, yes. And I can't believe I didn't say that. Yeah.
The, the question from the community is the fact that no one advised them ahead of time to let them participate. I know when we did the Sunrise Apartments, we did a Zoom Town Hall. We invited everybody, everybody to participate. We got all the feelings out there on the table. We had, we addressed them and we built where we were attempting to finish the property today. I think we only got two rooms done. Uh, this project did not have that opportunity. Was it something that we failed on or was it a process that was somewhere else that, that did not allow that to happen?
It was a confusing process. And when I first spoke with you about it um many months ago, almost a year and a half ago, I think it was, I believed that we would be meeting with the community during the time that it came up before the city. That's what I had been told. That's what I had seen happen in other counties and how I had been advised by other directors to follow the lead of the city. So um, I was surprised because I didn't know that the city had entered into a, a general plan that changed the zoning and these were things that were uh not familiar to me. So I was taken by surprise with everybody else. And in fact, it took me about four days to completely understand what was going on and what happened. So I was very um regretful that it happened the way it is. I'm very sorry that it happened to the community the way it did. But that's what I told you. That's what I believed.
So the, the next question is, we're here today and we're providing service for 20 years and we've heard the community talk about all their concerns.
Yeah.
And we've heard their concerns and will staff do their part to make sure none of the concerns come true? Make sure we don't have people watering the streets? We don't have shopping carts? We don't have sick people living per, per room? Is that something we can guarantee the community that we will not let this happen?
We will guarantee that we'll provide excellent services. I absolutely can't guarantee what's gonna happen every single day on every public street, but we will absolutely do an excellent job in this community to provide services. And I feel that um, a couple of years from now, this is gonna be a, a very positive experience and people are gonna be very proud of the people who live here. We, by the way, already have one supportive housing community here, anchors.
I think we need to work as a board on the future to make sure anything like this comes up again. We need to have a resolution to make sure it goes to the public at some point, to get some public outreach or the input from the community. Uh, you know, like I talked about before, I have a neighbor that suffered from post-traumatic stress disorder from Vietnam War. He was a helicopter pilot. Uh, for years, we fought head-to-head on issues. Once I sat down with him, he told me his problem. It wasn't the fact that I was having my feels sprayed with helicopter. In fact, it, he lost his, he lost his shit, basically, when the helicopter flew over his house. So now I have to go, I have to go there and I have to be with him when the first plane comes across, helicopter comes across his house, so he doesn't panic. Once I do that, he's fine. But the fact that he was surprised causes years of grief. And we don't want that to happen in our community. We're already divided enough. We don't want to be divided anymore. And I think the community has, has outreach just enough that we, we, we get it. Something should have been done. I mean, we could take responsibility for it, but it wasn't dropped in our, in our court. It was dropped on someone else's hands. I don't want to throw the city council on the bus because they never got it either. It was their staff that allowed it to happen where they should at least advise them uh so we could have stopped it or, or, or backed up a little bit. I know we voted for the funding for the, the minimal funding for the project that uh I assumed it was going through all the processes with the city council and public outreach and all that stuff. And it really came as a surprise when it, this happened overnight and no one knew about it. And I think the community's up in arms over that too. So uh, I hope you guys do your job and uh we'll support you any way we can. We don't want the community to have a problem with this, with this subdivision or this apartment complex.
Understood.
Any other questions, comments?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I want to thank you uh staff for taking the time to follow up um and, and putting this on the agenda in this format to um get those uh questions answered. And uh, Mr. Chairman, for, for what it's worth, for the members of the community, I'll say that um, you know, I've sat here for 14 years and this is the first time that we've done this in this format where questions from public comment were actually agendized and uh answered back. And, and so I know that that, that doesn't solve the issue and how many of the uh, uh, members of the public feel, but I, I do want you to know that that's, this is the first time that this happened on there. Um, so again, thank you for that. Lastly, I think, I think uh that uh, you know, this, this did fall through the, through, through the crack. And, and, and not saying that through an excuse because we, we did have our guard up. We um, during, during uh, the, the hardest time of the pandemic, meaning where no members of the public were allowed. We had many meetings where there was nobody in the seats for, I mean, I, I did WebEx from my home in Corcoran for a year and was on the screen um, uh, for, for our Tuesday morning board meetings. Um, but, but we had, we had some um, some misses on the agenda when it came to uh, um, the state giving the counties money for us to buy hotels to um, uh, for the counties to purchase and renovate them and remove asbestos and paint them and put homeless people uh in that, in them. And so we had long discussions um on those. And, and a couple of board members, um, myself included, we voted no on those types of projects. And it wasn't because, I mean, we said this on record, it wasn't because of a lack of passion for the um, or respect for the homelessness uh population um, uh, here in the county. It was just because of some of the points being made right now, meaning COVID legally, we cannot. If it was my district, legally, I cannot have a town hall meeting during those two years. And in 14 years, I've probably had about 12 hall, town hall meetings between Avenue of Kettleman City uh, and uh, uh, the city of Corcoran. Um, so that, that was the reason why I voted no um on those two separate occasions when it was time for the county to buy those apartments. Uh, just because the, the people in that district, we're not gonna have an opportunity to hear about it until, until later. So I do feel a lot of what the community's saying, I'm, I'm in agreement uh with them on that. And so I don't know how Hanford could promise anyone that they would hold town hall meetings when um, going back to the end of last year, I mean, you still can't uh hold a town hall meeting. You probably could, but uh, you'd be against some of the uh, the pandemic regs that we've all had to deal with and, and try to live with here. So um, again, thank you for the follow-up on the information.
So if I can, Verboon, you have a follow-up? Yes, so follow-up on Supervisor Valley's request or uh question on uh, answering the question. That was from the public. You know, John Darpley's, or John Darpley's wife was able to put this in writing, which made it a lot easier for staff to get it back to uh staff to get the questions answered. So that made a big, big difference. You know, when it comes to the diets here, a lot of questions are asked. There's a little disconnect between someone saying it and interpreting it, getting it on paper and answering it. So that made it really easy for staff to answer the question, the specific questions in writing to staff at appropriate time. I think he got them within hour of the meeting on Thursday. So staff had them all weekend to look at. So I don't think John and his wife are doing that. Uh, it's important that uh, the community understands the process.
Additional questions or comments?
Um, yeah, Mr. Chairman, um, if I could, you know, obviously this process is, is uh, is what it is. It's, it's moved. But we did have some questions for counsel with respect to, I think, contractual agreements, where we are with those. Um, you know, what are, what are our options in this, in this process? And I, I don't know, you've had some time to review that. And I'd just be curious, you know, what you've come to at this point.
I'm happy to share. Um, and I do have an update for the board today. As you are aware and as this discussion has evidenced, the county entered into an agreement to ensure the provision of important health and safety services within the county. And unfortunately, some project concerns unfolded after the project location was finalized. As a result, I was asked uh to confer with outside litigation counsel to examine the county's contractual position and to determine the extent of county remedies to terminate county involvement in the project. Outside legal counsel has advised that the county cannot terminate the agreement at this stage as it was exposed the county to significant liability and risk of civil right violations. So for to the particular agreement that is at issue, um, it would be against legal advice to pursue, to attempt to pursue any action um legally to uh remove itself from the contract. Uh, does your question extend to other uh contemplated agreements as well?
Well, I, I guess, you know, in, in our exposure, um, I don't know, what is the, the total project is roughly 36 million? Well, I guess, you know, in our exposure, I don't know, what is the total project is roughly $36 million?
$37 million, I believe, is the total project value.
Okay. And so with respect to the county's exposure, I guess it's difficult to opine on what level of responsibility we would have if, you know, for some reason, if we broke a contractual agreement. But I guess perceivably, if it were, I know that Ms. Lewis has talked about our small portion of this, but if this project were to fail, I guess the possibilities are wide open. I mean, we get it all the time here with deep pockets lawsuits and with respect to that. But I guess the question is, you know, our exposure, if the project, I guess, didn't go forward based on our decisions.
Yes, if the board decided to take an action that prevented the project from moving forward. When I say take the action, I mean initiate litigation or declare breach of the contract, that it would have the potential to expose the county to extreme liability for damages and also to civil rights violations, which could have their own independent consequences financially.
Well, I will follow up with just, my colleagues have, you know, shared some of their thoughts in this process. You know, I think we all had hopes that, you know, there were good things that would come out of this. As a past agriculturist, you know, I've worked with farm workers my whole life and I never asked them to do anything that I wasn't willing to do myself. And, you know, I've come to know those people well and know that they're some of the most conservative people on this earth. They've come to this country and they're working hard, you know, to provide an existence for their families that wasn't able somewhere else. And so those were the kind of the positives of this project. But all along, it was truly my belief, and I've shared this with folks that have called me, that, you know, that this process would have a public, the opportunity for the public to provide input. Clearly, it was outside of our jurisdictional boundary. And, you know, I know that's a hard one to swallow. It's hard for me to swallow because I truly believe that that was going to be the case. And I think in going forward, you know, that should be built into any model that, you know, that we bind ourselves to into the future. But, you know, for the larger part of the project, you know, I think, you know, those people that, you know, beyond the 22, you know, facilities or rooms that we're talking about from the county, you know, those people worked hard to put food on our table and continue to put food on our table every day. And I believe they still, they have every right to live in a decent neighborhood and within the bounds of reasonable safety. And also, the, you know, again, not having the opportunity to hear directly from upholdings, you know, with respect to how they're going to monitor this facility. I just believe that, you know, this process could have went better. And, you know, from our perspective, we've had those experiences and we've been through this and we've all experienced, you know, what it means to make sure that the public knows that these projects are going to happen and took that public input and made those decisions not to let that happen. But in this case, you know, that didn't occur. But I appreciate everyone's input in this process and it's unfortunate, but it is what it is at this point on our behalf, I believe.
Good, thank you. Supervisor Valley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Allowed me a little time for follow-up. I mean, just piggyback on some of Supervisor Peterson's comments. You know, how could a company come here, not be open to public input? Well, that's just part of being a good corporate neighbor. And we have a lot of businesses in Kings County that are good corporate neighbors and go above and beyond. Now, out the gate, this company doesn't seem that they have the intention of being a good corporate neighbor if the attitude to the city of Hanford, the attitude of the county of Kings is, hey, we could do this without you anyways. And I know the five of us do not like that attitude. I know we don't because it does have the ability to put us in a position like this. And as Supervisor Peterson mentioned, we've always tried, when there was a hard issue, to be open. And back in 2009, this place would be filled every Tuesday over the vote that we were going to take here at the board to expand the waste management landfill, to give them a contract to be able to move some more dirt and do business there outside of Kettleman City for another 30 years. And that vote, when we started that process, that vote came one year later. And the amount of people that were here upset about that is just the same as what's been taking place here at our meetings the last couple of weeks. We, it got to a point one time, and we haven't done this since, but there were so many people coming that the county, we had to move our meeting to the civic auditorium just for public comment. And I remember that day took about six hours of public comment that day that we heard on that subject. Now, when you talk about another example, and I'll wrap with this one, Chair. This kind of stuff does happen. I remember about three years ago, there was some gentleman that came to the podium and it was on the agenda. And it was in regard to growing industrial hemp in the county of Kings when that whole issue started to appear in our county. And the men were at the podium, they're from Southern California. I never saw them before. They went on and on for 20 minutes about how great of a company they were going to be in growing hemp here. We just planted our first crop. And by the way, we joined the Moore Chamber of Commerce, the Hanford Chamber of Commerce. We did a contract for affordable housing. We're going to build 50-something homes, affordable homes in the county and the city of Moore, some numbers like that. So the guy goes on and on and then I ask him, sir, do you know, can you point to the five of us and tell us which district that you already planted hemp, industrial hemp seeds in? And he didn't know. So we asked for the address and found out that the industrial hemp that was growing, which we hadn't even voted on yet, was growing in my district. So when you want to talk about losing it, the board will tell you. I went after the gentleman for coming here. He said he was in and out of Kings County all year and didn't have the respect to come to me as the county supervisor and ask me how the hard-working people in the rural areas that I represent, how they felt about industrial hemp. Now, later on, once farmers and their neighbors found out about it, just like today and last Tuesday, they came in here and they were angry. They were angry that my fellow neighbor, who's also a farmer, is growing industrial hemp right outside my baby girl's window where she sleeps. And so, again, this is not new. It's just an issue that you're passionate about. And this is a time that I have to be in agreement with the board that something slipped through the crack because if we would have been told this is controversial with the location, I guarantee there would have been a conversation about it because that's what happens here. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Supervisor Verboon, you have a follow-up?
Just had a question, might have been answered already. So this is to council. Had we not entered into a contract for services, would they still be able to build the project?
I may need to defer to Lisa Lewis for that because that has to do with the grant funding, the description of the project. It's my understanding, but please, Lisa, as the person most knowledgeable, you can correct me. My understanding that is part of the project component was that they are able to have services provided on site. And that was our participation in it with being willing to provide those services on site. If we were not willing, then the project may or may not have scored sufficiently to get other grant funding necessary to build the project. Can you correct me or fill in any gaps, Lisa?
I think what you just said is right. I'm not sure I heard the question. What was the question exactly?
Had we not entered into a contract on January 24th with the project still being built?
It would depend if they found another partner, but the county behavioral health department is appropriate partner because these are the folks that we serve. So I don't know what would have happened had we not. It's hard to say what they might have done. I don't know.
It'd probably help their contract score higher points, right?
I'm sure that's true. Yes.
I put the same question to Jessica Berzak. I see she's online, but she said they could build this project without our involvement. They just had to find more funds somewhere else. Is that true?
I think they would need a service provider from someplace else. I believe so.
She's got her.
She's the one who can answer that.
Jessica has her hand up.
Yeah, can you, Jessica?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Okay, good. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Yeah, to answer that question, the way I explained it to Dr. Lewis is, you know, the no place like home funding that you agreed to partner with us for services is one of numerous, numerous state resources, all of which, probably except for the farm worker program, prioritize integrating vulnerable housing units. So absolutely, we could have scored with the credits. We could have found other resources that would have still prioritized integrating these vulnerable units. And like Dr. Lewis said, we felt that the quality of services from the county's behavioral health department put us in a better position so that rather than doing it on our own, we have robust services available. And we think that that puts us in a better position. It creates higher staffing patterns rather than really relying on property management to function as case managers, which is why we sought the partnership from the behavioral health department.
Thank you.
Thanks. Additional questions or comments? Again, if you have any other questions or comments regarding this project, just go ahead and write them down and hand them to the clerk or to staff and we will address them under that format so that we can get you the most appropriate, most accurate answer.
Actually, could you ask that they submit them to BOs questions@countyofkings.ca.us? That's the best place to send them to. I will not respond. I will forward them to the board and I will get direction.
We'll get them to the appropriate individual to be able to answer those questions.
If I may note that for anybody who didn't get it adequately written down, the email address is in the agenda packet. It's on the agenda item for today's meeting. You can find it there.
Yeah, so I don't know if there's any more agenda packets in the back, but I'm sure we can get you a copy of that cover sheet. With that, thank you very much, Dr. Lewis. Any closing comments?
I think you've got something here. Oh, did you have a question?
Yeah, I had a question for Dr. Lewis.
Sorry.
Worked you and human services, has it worked with the developer on this?
Have we worked with the developer?
Yeah.
You mean in another capacity?
Of this whole project.
Well, when the developer was doing some drawings, they asked us where we would like to have our offices, what kind of offices we would like to have. We made a request to have a garden. We made a request about how the kitchen would be set up, things like that.
How long ago have you had communications with them knowing and putting things together like that?
It's hard. I came to the board, so I think it was about 16, 17 months ago that I originally brought up the opportunity to apply for the grant.
You knew about almost two years ago already about this project?
Yes.
Need the location to?
That's what bothered me is we didn't know. And that's where I lose kind of respect for our own departments, not letting us know. Because we should have known. We would have been the first to know. Because that's why they're here. We didn't know and they didn't know. And they probably voiced their opinion long ago. We wouldn't have all this chaos now that we haven't because they're trying to get information. And I'm getting calls, very respectful. I'm not complaining, complaining. The only thing is they don't know. First part, I don't know to tell them. I think that makes us look very bad. So that's where I lose the respect for our departments, not letting us know what they're supposed to know. That's all. Thank you.
And, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to add that that's coming from a supervisor who, when we talked about the county buying these apartments, right, to convert them for us to own them and put homeless folks in them during the pandemic. He was, Supervisor Peterson was able to know that this was going to be in his district and he was able to talk to people and he was able to come here even though his constituents weren't allowed in the chambers. But he was able to represent them folks and say, the folks that I represent do not want this hotel in our district. We already carry a lot of that population where his area is, across from the swap meeting, Costco and all those hotels over there, which one of them was the subject matter of it. And so, you know, that is helpful to know because I heard him and I was able to support him with the no vote on that. By not knowing and Supervisor Verboon not knowing, and not to say in his defense, but I guess in my defense, if we didn't know, then we didn't know it was controversial. And that goes to the point why, on the record, I was surprised when I saw the yes vote that I cast as well on there, knowing that that wasn't, that's not my MO on my 14-year record. So I just want to put that out there one more time.
Good, thank you. Dr. Lewis, you want to any closing comments?
I'm available to take any additional questions. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
No, and I appreciate you stepping up and doing that. Appreciate that very, very much. With that, thank you very much, everyone, for that item. We will now move on to the final item of the morning and that's an update from Public Health regarding COVID. And Rosemary, thank you for being here.
Good morning. Thank you, Chairman, members of the board, Rosemary Rand, Public Health. I actually have good news to report. We've seen a drastic decrease in the cases over the past month. From February 7th through February 27th, we had a total of 2,128 community cases. In comparison, the three-week period prior, so February 7th, prior to February 7th, we had a total of 8,421 cases, which shows a 75% decrease from those two, three-week periods. We are now seeing an average of 74 cases a day. And as a reminder, that doesn't include the home COVID tests. We've started to see a slight decrease in the percentage of cases among the 0 to 11 and 12 to 15 population and have maintained a steady rate between the 65 and older population. So the most significant decrease has been among the 16 to 16,4-year-old age group. We're seeing the same decrease within the prison population and continue to have direct daily contact with all three prisons and are prepared to assist if they need. The health department continues to issue isolation and quarantine orders through our website. We continue to focus on patients at the highest risk for severe disease who we continue to contact as test results come in. We're currently evaluating the need to prioritize the highest-risk populations, mostly in congregate settings such as skilled nursing facilities, businesses and schools, which is in alignment with the trend that's going on in the state and the region of moving away from individual case managed to more congregate, high-risk settings. Omicron is currently the dominant variant in Kings County, making up 97% of the specimens that are sequenced during the month of February. And at this time, there are no other variants of concerns that are coming up within the county. As for the hospital, as of February 28th, the local hospital has 19 patients in med surg and three in ICU. And of those admitted, 17 are Kings County residents. And that's a significant decrease since the last report as well. In the last two weeks, our local hospital has seen a 33% decrease in the hospitalizations. And we are happy to continue on the downward trend of these hospitalizations. We continue to work with Adventist Health regarding their staffing needs, although at this time, they've been fine. Unvaccinated patients continue to make up the majority of the hospitalized patients, which now send at 80% of those. Adventist Health has notified our department. They have seen a significant decrease in the demand for monoclonal antibodies and the treatment and feel confident that they're able to serve the people in their emergency department. Our PPE status has not changed. We're still maintaining a 60-day supply of PPE for our healthcare facilities. And within the last three weeks for testing, Public Health collected 3,400... Public Health collected 3,401 COVID tests, which is a significant decrease from the weeks prior. The prior week period of January 17th to February 6th, we collected 12,235. So that's 138% decrease in testing. The iHealth Home Kits continue to be distributed to everyone who receives a PCR test at the Hamford site and at our mobile testing clinics and in Corcoran Clinic on Sundays. And we've distributed 15,330 home kits. We also have received an additional 12,000 home test kits that we're partnering with various community organizations to distribute them in the community. Initially, we're working with Kings County Commission on Aging to reach their Meals on Wheels, sorry, that's a mouthful, Meals on Wheels program participants, their adult daycare and their senior walk-in appointments. We'll also be partnering with HSA and their foster care programs to provide kits to all children in care and their families. And we've also put out requests to the family resource centers and the food distribution sites to also be handing out kits there as well. Turnaround timing right now for our testing is 24 hours for results. And this can change at any time depending on the volume of tests, although we're seeing, we have plenty of time to do it with the reduction. In the last three weeks, February 7th to the 27th, Public Health administered 779 vaccines, which is a half a decrease from the three weeks prior, which was 1,415. So that number also is going down. As of today, we have 9,065 partially vaccinated residents and 6,752 fully vaccinated residents, which remains at the 51% of the entire population of Kings County is vaccinated. The CDC has recently updated their recommendation, it was in the news this week or last week, regarding the timeframe between first and second doses of the mRNA vaccines. For some populations, initially, patients would receive their second dose of Pfizer after 21 days and Moderna after 28 days. The new recommendation is eight weeks between the first and second doses. The booster timeframe remains at five months after the second dose. In addition, California Department of Public Health is moving away from the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine, and we've been unable to obtain any orders of the vaccine. We are able to complete our scheduled appointments for J&amp;J but are no longer accepting appointments or walk-ins at this time. Our current breakthrough rate stands at 9% and 38% of our fully vaccinated population in Kings County is boosted. In the past two weeks, the state has also began, which you may have heard in the news, into an endemic approach to COVID-19 by using their, and I put in quotes, smarter plan. Smarter stands for shots, masks, awareness, readiness, testing, education, and RX. This will allow the state and all of us to prepare on how to manage COVID-19 being in our everyday lives and allows flexibility to scale up as needed for any additional variants or case increases. With this smarter plan, in addition to the significant decreases that Kings County has been experiencing in the community with the case numbers, the vaccines, and the testing, this will allow us to return towards more traditional public health functions while still remaining responsive to the community's needs and ability to scale up should the need arise. As a point of reference, the department has seen the following decreases in demand from a month ago. Testing has gone significantly down, 138% in three weeks. The cases have gone down significantly, over 75% decrease. And the vaccine is over half reduction in the past three weeks. We've spent the last couple of weeks evaluating the current needs and the community-related vaccination efforts and testing needs. In order to align appropriately with the state's plan and our region's plan and manage the reduced numbers at our county-run clinics, we have established a modified schedule that will allow us to effectively use our vaccine and testing teams, and we're hoping to start that March 12th. So I have actually some handouts. We will be in our Avenue, Armona, and Home Garden the first and third weeks of the month. We'll be in Corcoran and Kettleman City the second and fourth week of the month. And we will continue to provide vaccine and testing services at our Hamford Clinic Monday through Friday. And we will also be doing some weekends. We're still available for pop-up site requests, which includes already scheduled events. And we're also establishing the list of local providers and pharmacies who are providing vaccine to make sure that all that information is available to the public. In addition, the Vax58 Task Force for Testing and Vaccine is planning several events through the spring in Kings County that we'll be working closely with them and sharing the information in the community as well. In addition, we've had a lot of updates in the last few days from CDC and the state. CDC has implemented a COVID-19 community-level dashboard. The categories, the counties and regions, it categorizes the regions into levels of low, medium, and high. It provides recommendations based on vaccination status, case rates, and hospital admissions on safety precautions. Currently, Kings County and most of the counties in the Central Valley are still listed as high, and then they put a recommendation of what should be done. CDPH, effective today, March 1st, has updated their general masking requirement for unvaccinated individuals. It will be moved to a strong recommendation for all persons regardless of vaccine status. In addition, effective March 12th, universal masking requirements in the K through 12 and childcare settings will also move to a strong recommendation. Masks will still be required in hospitals, acute care facilities, skilled nursing facilities, and clinics. As mentioned earlier in my report, we are seeing the current surge continue to trend downwards, and we strive to continue to support our communities to stay safe and protected. We want to remain diligent and cautious during this time as we know how quickly it can change. We have the tools to help our community through these surges, and we continue to stress the importance of testing, staying home when you're sick, wearing a face covering, and getting vaccinated and boosted when eligible. This concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Rosemary. Any questions or comments regarding the COVID response?
When can we remove this plastic?
Well, you know, I will check because there are several recommendations coming down. And I was looking at it about workforce. And so I don't know if you know, the governor came down with releasing a lot of his executive orders. Several will be coming effective March 31st and then June 30th. So I have a feeling it will be soon.
Are they going to provide mints once that's?
I know now, yeah. No masks and you'll have mints. I also put the link to a couple of those dashboards that I've shared as well.
Ms. Chair, just a quick question.
Yes.
So the, I know a couple of weeks ago, the board was told that there is a large order of more home test kits coming. Did those arrive?
Yes, the 12,000 arrived. And we're working, like I said, with Meals on Wheels participants, food distribution, FRCs. You know, what sort of happens is there's not a lot of cases, so people don't want tests. But we really want to encourage them to have them available. So if you feel sick, because it's the way you're going to do surveillance in the community.
No, of course, and no, thanks for making sure that we got more. They have been helpful. I've been able to take three of mine to three different friends over at least the last month and a half when it got really bad and go there and help them through the tests to find out they were negative or in two cases, positive. So those are very helpful. And I think they are the attraction for people to come test if they know they're going to walk away each member of their family that tests with two of those home-free test kits.
So that's the plan.
Okay, thank you.
I've never looked at one. What's the shelf life on a test kit?
So it's interesting you say that. We do have some that are coming expiring like July 1st. So they have provided some emergency use expansions for those. So some of these other ones are longer, but they're about six months to nine months. It just depends on.
That's not bad.
You know, and so if you have them in your, I mean, I have them in my cabinet. So if you're feeling sniffles, just do a test.
Good. Any other questions or comments? Again, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hill, do you have an update on county staff staffing?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd also like to take this opportunity to expand on something that Ms. Rand mentioned. On February 25th, the governor issued an executive order rolling back many prior orders. In total, the order rolls back 11 orders now. Five will remain in effect to March 31st and five will remain in effect until June 30th. Most significant of our operations is the use of retired annuities. We've relied on this population heavily during this pandemic to get us through some workforce challenges. But then also some of the flexibilities that assist with COVID response, such as licensing and certification waivers for hospitals, modifications to EMS personnel, scope of work, and staffing requirements. Well, we'll remain in effect for now, which is a good thing because we don't know if another surge will occur. On the question about the plastic, Supervisor Verboon, that's also a Cal OSHA item. So they will have to catch up with the state. And if you remember, they are usually about two to three months behind them. But right now, there's current emergency temporary standards for those as well as other regulations that we hope that they will adjust.
I feel safer between them.
Got it.
Well, you know, I mean, there's no way my germs are going to go around that.
Right.
You know, better. I just wanted mine tinted a little bit. I would like your tinted too.
I just don't see how the Assembly and the Senate could sit on the floor, 80 in one chambers and 40 in the other, and they don't have to do this. I want my seat back over there.
Understood.
I don't want to give it up. It's dark here. The lighting's bad. I can't even read anything. I need to get back over there.
On the county employee cases, since the last surge began, we are now at 342, which is an increase of only 27, which is promising since we haven't reported that number in two weeks now. So commensurate with Ms. Rand's report, the cases are decreasing. I'm happy to answer any additional questions.
Are you seeing any surge from seasonal flu? No. Yeah, because it, you know, the same protocols also prevents a lot of the transmission of seasonal flu. And so you'd think that they would both be kind of similar. But that's good news too. But it is kind of a tough strain of seasonal flu. And that's why a lot of people are sick and a lot of people are testing. Even though they're not testing positive COVID, there's still a lot of problems with seasonal flu. So still take those precautions, whether it's drink a lot of water.
I heard a lot of coughing in here when this meeting first started. There's a lot going on, made me want to put my mask on, but it was too late already by then.
Another shield right there.
This is protection. This is protecting you right here from me.
Yeah. Yeah, they don't change the shot after. You do, every meeting? Yeah, stand corrected. Thank you.
With that, Mr. Hill, anything else you want to bring to our attention under COVID protocols? Anything?
No, that concludes my report.
Very good, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Hill? That concludes the business of today. We'll now move on to board member announcements or reports on their own initiatives. Board members can announce things that's been going on.
Yesterday, I think four o'clock, I had the KCO meeting, personnel meeting, and we discussed dates to have meetings and whatever. It's only quarterly, so it took a while to figure out what we're going to do. But very memorable. That's all I got. Due to the end of time and my bladder, I will pass.
Pass on announcements or pass on your bladder? Oh, okay. Supervisor Peterson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, we haven't met for a couple of weeks, but both Supervisor Verboon and I and our administrator, Mr. Hill, also attended the National Association of Counties Ledge Conference in Washington, DC a couple of weeks ago. Informational, I think a number of great issues, concerning issues were discussed. I chaired the National Association of Counties Agricultural and Rural Affairs Committee. The only reason I mention that is that, you know, we had taken a position or sent a letter of concern with respect to the administration's intent to update or revert back to old language with respect to waters of the US. There was a resolution that came through my committee. Had a lot of discussion about it. It was cross-claimed by some other committees. The ultimate end of it is it goes to the full board of the National Association of Counties to determine what position we're going to take. And proud to say that, you know, with respect to that, the National Association of Counties aligned itself with the American Farm Bureau and other organizations across the country that are concerned about this overreach with respect to LOTUS. The other concerning opportunity that I had there was for about four or five of our policy committee chairs, we were provided an opportunity to meet with the Senate Intel Committee. They provided us with a classified briefing on political influence and security concerns. And obviously, that dealt with more web-based challenges. We were provided presentations from the Director of National Counterintelligence and Security, which is referred to as ODNI, FBI counterintelligence, and as well as Department of Homeland Security and all with respect to outside influences on our country. And most of the stuff that they shared with us, we can't share. But the one thing I will share is that FBI made it clear that they are providing opportunities for counties to have FBI come in and discuss with them the policies and principles of the county. And they're more than happy to come in and provide that insight and education to make sure that we're not, you know, we don't fall in the hands of, you know, things that we don't want to be involved with. And I know this county has had one excursion with that, and I was able to thank the right people. And so with that, that's my comments.
Good, thank you.
Well, I will say also that we did meet with Congressman Valadeo's staff, also Congressman McCarthy's staff. And we're able to share our Ledge platform. It's a pretty restricted, as I think is well-known throughout, that those in control of the House right now have restricted access. And but we were able to meet with our congressman and our possibly congressman in the future, the new districts, how they've been redrafted. And again, we're able to deliver, you know, our information thanks to Paragon, our federal lobbyists, for setting all that up. They did a great job in making contacts and representing us when we're not there. With that, that's all.
Good, thank you. Supervisor Val.
I just continued to meet with staff on a couple of occasions, Chair, for some things that are important to me in District 2. And I'll just close by, I do want to say thank you to Mr. Hill and Supervisor Verboon and Peterson for going to DC and representing the county. That's a big trip. It's time away from the family. And it's, that should go, without being said, that sacrifice to get over there. So appreciate you guys.
On that, Supervisor Peterson, we got in about 4:30 on a Friday night. He had to be at a meeting at 6:30 in the morning. He had to be at a meeting at 6:30 in the morning. By Super Bowl Sunday, I think I had enough. No one left alone. They've got this LOTUS bill. They're nonstop talking to him. He was getting wore out. And then he was still in meetings at Wednesday at noon when he got done. I wasn't invited to the last meeting because I got a big mouth.
I barely noticed.
I wasn't able to go, but yeah. It was a different trip. You know, I've been going, this is my 16th trip, I believe, in 12 years. It was completely different this time than it has been over the past 11 years. Obama was, you know, Occupy, all the parks were full. With Trump, you know, there was a lot of activity, a lot of construction, a lot of stuff going on. Not many protests, and now there's no one there. You could go anywhere you want to go. A lot of things are closed. You can't go to the Capitol. The whole Senate side was completely closed. The congressional side was barely open. There was no one in the hallways, no one there. Jelly is just solid people, a lot of buzz going on. So the administration now, I don't believe anybody's working at all. It's pretty pathetic the way things are going. So I was a little sad to see that happen. I like going there when it's an activity, a buzz, and people are getting things done. And you could talk to your representatives. No one's home. Night train, no one's home. So that's why I didn't have any report. I got no good news.
Hey, Supervisor Verboon, President Biden, he wasn't able to remark how good-looking Supervisor Peterson is.
When we were there two years ago, Trump came and spoke. And they came and got us, and they put us in a front row because they wanted Trump to recognize us. Biden showed up. There was no limes, there was no, they removed the coffee from the room for some reason. And the crowd was about half the size. And that crowd that was there wasn't even paying attention. He just read off the teleprompter and walked out. There was no interaction with staff, there was no interaction with people, there was no interaction with anybody. It was kind of sad to see that, you know, you've got a local elect has come to the White House or the United States Capitol, and there's no interaction. And it's kind of sad to see that. We need interaction, we need to be heard. We are the link from the people to the government, and there was nothing there.
I don't want that to be an inside joke. We talked about it a couple of times, but a couple of years when Supervisors went to DC. to DC, and they were in the room with President Trump, and President Trump stopped what he was saying and made some remarks about how good-looking Supervisor Peterson was. And so I think it, it didn't go viral for a while. It took off, right?
Unfortunately.
The number one photograph on the White House webpage was a picture of me and Craig talking to the president.
Yeah.
Out of four years in office. Pretty scary.
Yeah.
I would add, to me, Craig knew he was talking to him, and he stood up right away like, you know.
Fixing his hair.
But I will say that, that there's a group called Intergovernmental Affairs, and for whoever holds this seat, it provides amazing access to the administration, and it was much more active, I think, during Trump's administration, for whatever reason. Kind of sad to see that opportunity slip because, I mean, literally Doug Rye, we had met the folks in that group, and they work, you know, in the old executive office right next to the president, so you could literally, literally pick up the phone and be talking with the White House. And that was provided, didn't matter whether you were Democrat, Republican, it was, that was the call. You had those numbers and, and they would immediately connect you with the people, you know, whether it was EPA or whatever agency it was, and that Intergovernmental Affairs representative, whoever the designee, could be USDA, whatever, but, but it's kind of sad to see that slip because I think it was a really valuable tool, not only for us, but for the administration to hear directly from the people, and, and I hope that, you know, that, that might, may change for the better, you know, once COVID, you know, policy changes a little bit, but.
Thanks for going.
Good, thank you. Cal-Vans meeting was reported, 419 vans remained active, 92 in the general van pool, 327 in ag industry fleet. That number continues to stay pretty consistent. The, the wet weather in December affected it very little, and then all of the activity in agriculture since has just kept that numbers up pretty high. Program is currently logging about 110,000 miles per week with an average 162 miles per van, so. The insurance coverage premium unfortunately did go up as part of everything else, and that increase, that, or that premium is now $2.8 million, and that's part of just the operation of that service. Catalytic converters continue to be stolen from those vans. They're, they're higher from the ground, they're easier, easier mark, easier to steal, and several legislators have introduced bills, and we certainly want to support that legislation to increase fines and the reuse of catalytic converters, and they're also mining it to get the precious metals out of them. Cal-Vans also was awarded an Affordable Housing and Sustainable Communities grant, helping with the transportation part of those developments, and electric vans is the goal and part of those developments, so we certainly hope that when developments are planned and, and used, that and both compressed natural gas are, are available to some of the fleet to be able to use on some of those housing units. Kings County History Digitation, Digital Lace, you know, anyway, recording stuff on, on the internet. Had a meeting on the 16th. The goal is to get as much historical data of communities in Kings County on the web for researchers of everybody that would like to do that research, whether it's genealogy or, or, or different questions about different communities. Tulare County is a little bit ahead of us with the museum alliance, and they have organized many of the groups in Tulare County, and so that's going to be the goal in Kings County. Community Health Needs Assessment process continues, trying to identify challenges and barriers and concerns in healthcare in the county, and we continue to work on that issue. Cal-Viva, I want to thank Rosemary for being there for that event on, on February 17th. It was the first in-person meeting in about 18 months, or almost two years, really, prior to COVID. We addressed some of the, our budget projections and continue to work on some of the, and reappointed and confirmed commissioners new to the year. Also reviewed a lot of the compliance plans and the financials, and also the, talked a little bit about the governor's plan to carve out the healthcare initiative, working with Kaiser, and so we continue to work on that issue as well. 393,000 souls are enrolled in the, in the coverage, with 33,000 of those in Kings County. We currently, currently control about 69% of the market share. Disenrollments have been ceased just as the evictions by the governor, and I'm, we were anticipating that coming off of the regulations soon, between now and June, and just like with the evictions, we anticipate a reduction in numbers because some of those numbers have applied for other products in the market. Kings County Homeless Collaborative also continued to meet and talk about housing allocation point-in-time count and receive room key updates. Kings Wasting Recycling, we had a special meeting to talk about illegal issues. LAFCO, we approved staff going to a workshop in March and rescheduled the March meeting. CART, we did hold a public meeting for unmet transit needs, also approved some, some fixed assets. We also approved, and, and it was also part of the consent calendar this morning, the letter of support for some senior and disabled person routes going from Avenel to Hanford to Lamore for shopping and doctor's appointments. That's going to be a pilot program, and hopefully we'll be able to, upon success, be able to expand that. And driver recruitment and training program continues, and anybody that has, knows anybody that wants to learn how to be a commercial driver, we have a program and we can get you enrolled and get you certified onsite and get you employed. At the Association of Governments, we also talked about Transportation Development Act funding and approved the draft budget that is out, so I encourage you to look at the website and look at the overall work program and budget. Some of the updates, Caltrans Project, the roundabout at Kettleman City has been pushed back to 2024. The Kings River Bridge replacement now near Stratford is pushed back to September of '23, and those issues continue to, to be part of the discussion. We too address some of the AB 361 meeting laws, and I think there's an update coming that. I'm not sure what the governor did as far as extending that process, but many groups are continuing that service as well to community members to be able to, to participate by way of the web or teleconferencing. The Housing Authority, we met and wrote off some, some uncollected debt and approved the contract with California Employment Development Act that's part of that. Behavioral Health Meeting yesterday also approved the AB 361 extension, and will continue to work on the Mental Health Services Act, and that is also available online. The Kings County Historical Society meeting last night had Michael Seema's presentation of Before the White Man. It's a presentation talking about the San Joaquin Valley, really prior to many local history, and it's a very interesting process, and if you have a chance to, to be able to attend that, it's, it's very interesting to talk about how and, and his take on Native Americans, how they inhabited this area probably for four or 5,000 years. In his words, unmolested for a variety of reasons, but I don't want to spill the end, so maybe you should attend that and, and get his, get his take on it. So with that, Mr. Hill, do you have any board correspondence, upcoming events or information on future agenda items that you'd like to bring to our attention?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Your board did receive an update on the Assessment Appeals Board remote hearings during the COVID-19 update or pandemic, excuse me, that is in board correspondence. For upcoming events, every Tuesday in March, the Lunchtime Food Truck takeover from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM at Court Street in Civic Park. The Children's Story Garden and Museum will be hosting a St. Patrick's Day with Tea on March 12th. The Children's Storybook Garden and Museum is also still hosting the Kids' Night Out on Saturday, March 12th and Friday, April 22nd from 5:30 to 8, located at 175 East 10th Street in Hanford. The cost is 25 per child for members and 28 per child for non-members. The Kings County Farm Bureau Wine and Beer Showdown fundraiser is scheduled for March 31st from 5:30 to 8:30 at the Hanford Civic Auditorium. Your board did also receive an invitation for the Recurrent Energy Four Ribbon Cutting Ceremony, the, the solar project on March 15th with a lunch that starts at 12:30 and a program at 1:00 PM. For upcoming agenda items, Admin has one agreement and one amendment with the Department of Water Resources, one for the Dudley Ridge Water District for change of point of delivery, and one for Tulare Lake Water Basin Storage District and Westlands District, or excuse me, Water District to allow for Article 56 carryover. Elections has two items, the proposed response to the grand jury report titled Kings County Elections Department, and the initiative proposing a half-cent special transition, transaction in use of tax. Public Health has, of course, the COVID-19 update and a consideration for the purchase of two vehicles for COVID-19 testing and prevention, and consideration for the County Medical Services Program Emergency Response Grant Extension, and Public Works has consideration for the approval of the completion of the Empire Street Crosswalk Improvement Project. I'd also like to thank Supervisor Peterson and Verboon for showing me the ropes in DC. It was quite an eye-opening experience. Those folks don't mess around. It's been a while since I hit the ground running at 6:30 Saturday and don't stop until Thursday. It was good to see those folks in action, though, the work that they put in. It was also great to interact with my peers and fellow board members from other states. I got to run into an individual that I ran EMS calls with in Nebraska, so it was neat to catch up with him and touch base, but again, it was just a neat experience and the advocacy that we were able to provide, I think will only get better, so thank you.
I was just glad the bail bondsman didn't have to call. There's always positive. Any questions or comments for Mr. Hill? With that, that concludes the business of today. We do have three items under closed session. One, litigation initiated formally, Laprino versus Kings County Conference with Labor Negotiator and a personnel matter. Do we anticipate any reporting out? Probably not. We'll do that next Tuesday. We also have a California Community Housing Agency regular meeting that is extremely late right now.
And they are standing by.
And they are standing by, so there are two items that I would like to get done before we break for lunch. One of them is the California Community Housing Agency regular meeting and the litigation versus Laprino, if we can get those two, and then we'll break for lunch, and then we'll do, do the other remaining two items. So with that, thank you, everyone. Play safe, safe, stay healthy.